Good morning, Commissioners and Executive Council members. This is a church building designed by Frank J. Homely and built in 1915-1916. Applications to construct from top and side additions, install a ramp, and alter the primary design of the school building.
Good morning, Commissioners and Executive Council members. I present to you an application for 991 St. John's Place, a former school building associated with the Jason St. Gregory Roman Catholic Church, as you can see here. It's located at the corner of Brooklyn Avenue in the Crown Heights North Loop District. The building has been taken for over seven years and shows significant signs of deterioration. Application is to convert the school building to apartments by altering the main entrance and doorway, modifying the windows and masonry at Central Bay, a time ago, located here, in order to level the porch and accommodate the apartments in our area. It also consists of constructing a rooftop and side yard addition north and remove portions to the rear. Commissioners, please note that installation of the ramp has been removed from the original structural work. Sarah Lloyd, Head of Brooklyn City Development, will briefly introduce the application to you, followed by Senator Olson, Architect of the Project.
Hi, my name is Sarah Lloyd. I am the Head of Brooklyn City Development and we proposed to modify the RCP process by St. Gregory's structure to redevelop the school into residential apartments. And there are three unique attributes to this project that I wanted to highlight. This is a long-term ground lease from St. Gregory's Parish, and they are our landlord. The second is that the ground lease plans themselves go directly to the capital and operating needs of the church, which is still in operation. And the school was abandoned about seven years ago for structural reasons, but when the church was looking to capitalize on their real estate, the modern-day schools, whether that be public or private charter, this structure is not half the size that a modern school would need. So that's why they went out through the RCP process with the residential redevelopment.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. It's very much been a pleasure today with what I'm afraid is a very long and complex presentation, so apologies for that. As Edwright and Sarah stated, this is St. Gregory's School. It is St. Gregory's School, and as noted, it was vacated seven years ago due to structural concerns. And just to briefly touch on that, Selman's Office did a complete preliminary structural assessment, determined that there was severe water infiltration at the outside of the building. The interior is actually quite robust and quite stable, and the guesses were that either the breaks were more porous than they should be. There is complete lack of waterproof or flashing details on the exterior wall. And the third component was the guess, and it was borne out in their investigation, that the exterior wall actually has spandrel beams on the outside that are quite deteriorating, but it has spandrel beams on the inside which are intact and quite robust. So this is, we need to fix the outside, which is extensive, and we need to provide some return to the church so they can both have money to operate and also fix up their building, which is also in a little bit of trouble. And this is the church on the St. Cass lot and its own lot. And as you can see, the church is very beautiful. All of these buildings were designed by Frank Homely, who was prolific throughout the city. And this is actually the second building that we had a chance to work on for him. Also, the Greenpoint Savings Bank. So we did do quite good research to understand some of the site configurations. So you can see on the left, in the 1888 sandstone, there's lots, but there's no buildings. In 1904, there was a St. Gregory's Church constructed, and there was a group of rowhouses with what appears to be a shared yard in the back. And by 1908, so it's 1904, 1908, that church remained, but that group of rowhouses had disappeared and a new group of rowhouses had appeared. And you'll see the rear yard extensions are different from the group of the old. By 1932, the church here had then joined by the school and by Directory Building, and these were built concurrently. So the church came first and then the other two buildings. And you can see that there were two additional rowhouses on Sterling Place, and there was one additional rowhouse on St. John's. This is just to show what the original church looked like. And the tax photos, both 1940 and 1980, are taken from the Brooklyn Avenue position, so there are no tax photos of the school itself, unfortunately. But what we can see is that the church has a very distinctive capillary. This is the rectory, and this shows some of the side entries of the church. And we also got the tax photos of the townhouses on St. John's, which show that the townhouse that was on St. John's was there in 1940, so when the school was built, there was a house right up next to it, but by 1980, that had moved away. And there's one more. In 1932, there was no garage in the back, so we know that at some point, the little garage was constructed and is included in the designation report. We're assuming that the garage was constructed at the same time the two townhouses on that side, because it has no access from St. John's. So this is a pasted-together street stage showing the current conditions from the corner, looking at the church, and you can see that there are very nice trees between the two buildings. From Brooklyn Avenue, directly on the right, the church on the west. And from the corner of Brooklyn and Sterling, looking at the rectory building, and this is the gap that was created by the removal of the other townhouses. This area of the site is used for parking and will remain used as a parking. There is a very beautiful wrought iron fence that goes around this avenue. So the second part of our investigation was what's Crown Heights and what are the different building types? And so we studied, and it's made up primarily of four-story flat houses and rowhouses, which range in sale from two-plus basement to four-plus basement. There's little taxpayers, which have some residential above, and/or rowhouses. There's also some institutional buildings, I'm sorry, there's also large-scale residential which are six-story apartment structures, and those are located predominantly here. This is our site and over on this corner. And they're mostly located at the corners. And then institutional buildings, some are religious, some are school properties, but they range both in style and scale rather broadly. The other thing that we did was study the placement of schools. And we noted that between 1907 and 1929, there was a huge immigrant influx into this neighborhood, which resulted in construction of a lot of public schools over here. These are the three Crown Heights districts, this Prospect Place, and this is St. Gregory's. So St. Gregory's School is the only school building actually within the historic district. And as noted by Sarah Lloyd, the building is small, and it's small even in comparison to other school buildings in this era, which are roughly the same size. And there are advanced styles that we've quite varied, both in height and length of walls, and some of them are actually complexes. The St. Teresa's has a school for girls, a school for boys, and an auditorium. So to us, what we did for research, because there were no tax photos, the photograph on the left was actually taken by the commission staff during the preliminary surveys of this area. And what's interesting to me is it still had its pediment, it still had a lot of, at least in the center section, much of it was intact. These are older photographs, this one from the school's website, this one from a walking tour by a family from Crown Heights. And in those, we also can see that there's still an intact pediment in most of those locations. That pediment is gone. In these photographs, you can show the severe deterioration and elimination of much of the brickwork building and the need to really come back. We also highlight where those have been installed that do not match the store, both the right, although they're from the inter-division. And these are more disentails. And this is the close-up of the entry to the school. We went out with NIMARC staff last week. We believe that the transom is a big handsome and attractive wood transom that was backed off on the sides at some point. We're going to fill which matches the buck brick of the rest of the building, a pair of that doors shown here. So we believe that this is not a historic condition who will propose an alternative to this. The other thing is that there is a granite step, and the change in the application to remove the application for a ramp was marked by, so that what we're requesting now is the ability to chop out the little portion of this granite step, remove the two sort of, what become a little cheap ball platforms either side. And we'll be able to then bring it to, this shows the underside of the portico, and water, and as noted, there's not good waterproofing or flashing. The other thing that we wanted to focus on is the area between the church and the school building. This area has largely been used as a utility area and alleyway between the buildings. And what you can see is utilities that go down the cellar level is where a lot of the technical systems enter. And this is a hatch with a staircase that goes to that lower grade. So what we're proposing to do is relocate these elements, but we will be doing changes. And these are other views, in both directions, invisible through the box. But what you can also note is that the buck brick, which is on the front of the building, returns along the whole length of the wall from the front of the school to the back facing the church, but then it switches to this red brick. And that red brick wraps around towards the block to escape from getting to the elevations. This is the rear of the building where there has been more deterioration and the replacements, the ambidies. And highlighted here is the little garage building in the rear, which is a red brick on three sides, but has above curricular style. And these are the existing commissions about their floor. So here's the site. So the church obviously takes up most of the site. This is St. John's, this is Sterling, Brooklyn Avenue. And the school building sits here with its portico and the little garage in the back. And our proposal is to add two additions, one on the top and one to the side, and to partially demolish the garage by removing the wall that faces the school and the roof to create a garden space. Now, this is a whole series of existing and proposed elevations, so you will see the church and the school, the features that were called out in the designation report as the original. And the proposal is, as I said, group composition and side addition. The modifications that I want to note is that we will be removing portions of the windows in the center section and repositioning them to align with each other's existing plans to have a stair going up, and it's very small landing that offsets. And that's the close-up of that top and center arch. All of the blind arches are completely removed. And we're also relocating the spandrel pattern that gets done in the step. The black outline shows the existing church profile, on the right side is the existing townhouse on Sterling, which is not part of this application. The elevation of the garage and existing, and this shows the proposed group composition and the new, partially demolished garage. We're also, if you can see, on this side in the recessed area, there are two small windows, and what we're proposing to do is join the windows and allow new windows in those positions, add a window here, and modify this opening to accommodate a door and remove a door and install a window. All of the basement or lowest level windows are one-over-one windows, and that appears to be their historic condition. And this is the lower elevation of the garage with the proposed indoor corridor apartment. This is the back, again, showing the current condition with lots of different windows, and the proposed addition to the west and on top. And modification of the windows and doors here to allow for stepouts to garden spaces and apartment. And existing elevation on the west here, the point is that on the west, even though there is a townhouse and there was a townhouse in this position, when they constructed the school, they didn't turn the corner with the buck brick for that first day, but the rest of it is the red brick. And here, we're proposing a side addition, which goes up to the height of the first two levels of the roof, and so on. I'll go quickly through the plans. There is an existing and proposed cellar that's remaining with the hatch that was shown in the photographs. And then the red outline is the line of the existing building and the addition to the side. These are setbacks to meet the zoning requirements, which are for shallow, outer court, and the whole brick with an air door. And this is the existing section, which shows that offsetting pair of staircases with shared landing in the front section and the existing stair at the back, and you can see their heights are up quite a bit. For the addition, what we're doing is proposing to demolish the upper portion of the top floor and sink the first floor of the addition down into the building so that it is mostly hidden by the existing parapet, but has enough, yet the proper lighting there. And this shows the restored height of the central parapet, the other part of the parapet is down lower. And these are the additional floors on the top. And these are sections through, showing the repositioning of the windows and the relationship of the addition to the existing front wall. And this is through the side addition, showing the existing portico and the front wall of the school and the setback toward the second addition. And this is further to the side of the building where there's a modest setback at the top. And the rear, which again shows the existing. And for this one, we, in order to definitely do like air being, we're proposing to, with the rock to the building body, we're proposing to reduce the height of the red brick parapet that's there. And for the front elevation, just going back to the nice transom and the unfortunate cavity of this frame, what we're showing here is the existing, which includes the fence, chain link fence and planter that prevents access into the side of the school doors. And this is the existing wrought iron fence, not historic, but remains. And this is the existing axon vector. This would be the proposed plan, so there would be a new curb and fence with planted areas on either side of the entrance. We would cut the center section there and install a pair of new doors with a transom in the, so that we can have the address pub. And now go through the roof. Some of the pictures have trees with leaves and some of them do not, as you can see at both ends. This is the view looking east on St. John's Place, and the trees, you can always see it. This is the view looking east from a different position on St. John's Place, and you can see the addition. This is more in the front, and you can see the gap between the remaining rowhouse and the side elevation, and that would be the addition. And these are in sequences showing the existing, the rendered addition, and then a comprehensive rendering to maybe the scaffolding that's in place to protect the building. And closer to the intersection with church and the portico. And right in front of the church, that's the upper portion of the addition. Across the line, eight trees. On the same side down the street. And then because there was a question about this ability of buildings from directly across the street, this is across Brooklyn Avenue, wireframe is of the church, and the model of the building plus addition is here. And the photograph, there's a pasted-together photograph of this that replicates that position study. And this is the view from Brooklyn and Sterling. You can see the rectory and the courtyard and the church back here. And the proposed building is fortunately hidden by the, replicated here. And of course, wrapped around the building, this is the historic fence, which will be removed. That would be the addition. And this one directly across the addition. This is the photograph that the commission staff took to reuse it, because it's got the real parapet in place, and the addition would be, now, this will become part of the front door. Now, the key things, this is the end of all the slides. The key things here are, we make design choices to continue the design vocabulary of the building itself. And that was because, as we looked at the other school buildings throughout the area, it didn't make sense to do something that was drawing different. And because most of the buildings in this district are masonry, it seems it requires us to continue this design vocabulary of matching brick, which we have somewhere. And to continue to use the multi-light one-over-one windows on all of the three, danger this side, the only place we're proposing to use a one-over-one no multi-light is on red brick portions of the new addition. And the other thing is that this building does the, although it's at the edge of the Crown Heights District, or two, it is directly across the street from the Crown Heights District, or three, which contains most of the larger six-story apartment buildings. So there is a context for a six-story building in this district. It is very important to church to realize some measure of return here. We've had wonderful meetings with them, and it's been a really wonderful team for the progress of the project, but it's broken and it isn't. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Are there any questions? Yes, Michael.
You mentioned that the brick absorbancy might have contributed to the problems with the exterior, would you be testing on it so that you know that the bricks are safe?
We will be doing testing on it. This was from the initial report done by Selman at the time. I don't think that the breaks themselves are the real problem. I think it's the lack of flashing and waterproofing and that's the...
The testing.
And the testing, or the other, and the main thing is also, we've got some coming down.
The other thing is your illustrations all show the new crown molding on the perimeter as flat. Is that an illustrative issue or...
The ones that have it flat, we were asked to maintain the existing, oh, the profile?
Yeah, it doesn't show a bed mold or fill it.
That's, that's just for simplicity's sake of the... No, of course. It would not be flattering.
Edwright, can you just go back to the rendering process right across the street? Thank you. Are there any other questions? Go to test him on the Jesse Dano.
Good morning, Jesse Dano, please, for our first, for our result. HPC is pleased that the commission included this school building within the Crown Heights District, so it's a positive card given out for relating to a new style. It's an distinctive building, clearly designed to harmonize with the church, and its inclusion as a landmark allows publishing commissions to comment and guidance about the reuse, which is a wonderful opportunity. Overall, the room margins of the same vocabulary of the proposed building and the intended design is successful. HPC is pleased that this project will resolve the sorely needed disorder of Brooklyn before the century and developing as well. The issues are with the vault, specifically with the height. The top floor of the proposed addition should be eliminated, and third should be made to ease the transition of height between the rowhouse scale to the west and the taller construction which builds in the lot. The rowhouses are adjacent to the site and are two stories high, and the stark change in height, renewal and expense, is uncomfortable and should be reviewed and better. Thank you.
Thank you. Jay Dizzi, nine?
Hi, my name is Jay Dano and my wife and I own 973 St. John's Place in St. Austin, Florida. I oppose the current project as described in the handout and recommend that it be revised to stay in current envelope of five stories. I attended the Land use Board and Community Board eight meetings in September, where I'd like to note the unanimous recommendation that a committee was adjourned against the current plans and the board vote was thirty-six to zero against. I shared the board's recommendations, which were to keep within the footprint of the existing structure. Instead of keeping this recommendation, the current plans show two floors higher than previous mechanicals. The architecture plans are undistinguished, certainly not enough of the original architect, Paul Ian Corbett, who went on to build Rockefeller Center. His work noted the prominence of the original architecture firm that described an architectural attitude in Brooklyn. Paul Ian Blueberry, Brooklyn's leading firm of classical architecture, and many years before, were close to the Stanford life on the introduction of classical elements in the Russell Park. After Blueberry's death, Paul had teamed up with a young architect named Harvey Wiley-Corbett. And around the same time they were working on St. Gregory's Church, it was in Bush Tower on West Forty Second Street. Bush Tower was mostly Corbett's, St. Gregory's was mostly Frank Corbett's. Since the abrupt closure of the school in April 2011 and the landmark from the Crown Heights North Two in June 2011, the need forward to move forward with renovating an historic earth building is an alternative. I agree with the current priest, diocese, developer and architect that the brick pointing in roof and certainly in the shed and sidewalk need immediate attention. However, the attachment by the architecture firm reports to evaluate the church structure shows $3.1 million of needed work, which could be covered by the $7 million of these which is signed in November 2017. This seems to be a bait and switch on two levels. Losing the sounds of children playing and being implicated is a loss for the institution. However, there are large issues with Catholic church in New York settlements. This September, the church paid $27.5 billion, which has four victims, with another 100 settlements still to be reached at an estimated $500,000 each, 50 million left to pay. The redevelopment of a landmark school into luxury condos seems to be an expedient decision, but not the best one for the architecture of the block in the landmark neighborhood. Will the money actually fix the church or will it go for operations and lawsuits? St. Gregory's Church made a different choice with Pitt School, turning it into a court recording school instead of another insular luxury housing project. The Landmarks Commission exists and perpetues from traditions such as this one, enclosing two remarks. My first meeting with the Crown Heights North Association to discuss landmarking was held in this very school cafeteria. It seems to shame that the building itself could not be repaired. No estimates have been produced about what would cost to fix the existing issues in the school. Second, Joseph A. Calafon Hope Jr., former U.S. Secretary of Health, Education and Welfare in the LBJ and Carter administrations, founder, chairman of the National Center on Addiction and Substance Abuse at Columbia University, attended St. Gregory's School and is named as its most famous alumnus. He went on to graduate from Harvard Law and assert the country advocacy. I'd like to quote from his 2004 memoir, Inside: A Public and Private Life. The nonsense priests of St. Gregory's anchored in a Catholic religion circumcised by rules of conduct as detailed as the tax code, but without loopholes. The structure provided me comfort and security as a thirteen-year-old graduated from Oregon tree school that parents regarded to be American and Catholic. America promised opportunity and Catholic assistance salvation, assured of hope, and graduated from St. Gregory's Elementary School with unlimited help in future. If the plans were revised to stay within the existing footprint of the school and a public meeting room was made available, perhaps named after this Alafon, I would be delighted to support this.
Next speaker is Ethel Ties. Ethel Ties.
Good morning, I'm the Land use Chair for Brooklyn Community Board, Ethel Ties. I'm recapping the letter that the community board sent to the commission dated September seventeenth, in that the concerns that were decided were that we were asking for confirmation of the ground resource. And that request was denied. They were saying that the developer offered no response to that and indicated that they would not share the existing condition report with the project with the community board. Mostly, the Land use Committee, as I said, with I am the chair, voted down the proposal and as did the full board based on the density and scale of the proposed additions as being personally out of context and not harmonizing with the surrounding streetscape. As HPC mentioned, the transition from the neighboring two-story rowhouses to proposed apartments in the building is severe and all that negates the concept of a historic district, a sentiment cheered by the Crown Heights North Association. LPC should note that the intended reuse is not as a school, so the comparison effort to other schools in the community district, they don't seem to pretend. We are asking to have a advisement presented to the community board so that the board can support the proposal. We would hope that the diocese will include an opportunity for the delegates to invest in this highly punitive project and that may be a further reduction of the western addition so that it informs the thoughts of transition with the running rowhouses, increases the reservation plan for the church, and finally prove that any potential subsidence issues have been properly addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Deborah Young.
Good morning, my name is Deborah Young. I represent the Crown Heights North Association as well as myself, and the resident of Sterling Place. Our comments are based on the plans that were presented in September, so any changes would not be reflected at this day. Clearly, as you know, the school needs attention. This beautiful building yet is in serious disrepair. The proposal is a major development that is likely to have character with the neighboring architecture, both internally and externally. The proposal suggests adding approximately fifty vertical feet to the building. The building would also be expanded to the west, essentially constructing a new six-story rowhouse completely out of the lot line, eliminating the open west side of St. Gregory's School. When view from St. John's is near doubling of visual size, pages thirty-three, forty-two and fifty objectively demonstrate how the view from the street will change and the historic character of that section, streetscape, will be radically altered. Due to the scaffolding and current disrepair of the building, it may not be immediately obvious for radical change, additional lift and height increase. St. Gregory's School along with the church is based apart and offset from the neighboring houses, creating a pace and rhythm to the block. The openness building variation is facing a characteristic of landmark districts, not just qualities of the buildings themselves. If this proposed proposal is given life, as proposed, we question if it constitutes a landmark historic district. Proposed additions to the building are so extreme that after redevelopment, it would hardly be legitimate, it would hardly be legitimate to consider it the same building. We are very concerned about precedent that would be set by allowing the development of a cement project like this to go through. This plan seems to originally violate principles of historic designation. It is important for me to share how many of us who reside in historic communities fear about developers wanting to build in designated areas. Those of us who invested in our communities did so because of housing stock, the beautiful streetscapes, the architectural integrity of our buildings, the absence of large over-expanding buildings and peace and tranquility enjoyed in our backyard that are not pented by tall buildings. I can roll along, but I trust these feelings are understood. By no means am I suggesting we are anti-development or don't respect the need for affordable housing. As well in this case, without question, we submit a report that has restoration needs of St. Gregory's Church. This week, as in my family, my sister Walden have done, I sat in that backyard, taking in the view of the treetops and the church steeple. I sadly realize that this project will about to proceed as intended. The peacefulness and tranquility that many of us have appreciated and respected will be severely compromised by extreme development. We would like this project to be a win for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Michael Larson.
Hello, I'm Michael Larson and that is my family's home right there, 985 St. John's Place, the house that's next to the open space where the other house used to be. I think, being the fourth speaker, a lot of my concerns have already been addressed. I'm going to skip most of my prepared remarks and just come on a couple of things. First of all, there is a lot of evidence that schools can exist in a structure like this. My daughter's school in Carroll Gardens, Brooklyn, I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with that neighborhood on Fourth Street, is in the St. Gregory's Star and Sea School Building, which is exactly the same size and scale as this. It's a K through eight school and it fits perfectly fine. So I think, I think one of the overarching themes here is that the diocese is doing this to accumulate funds, which is one of the neighbors that addressed, to fix a church that has a, at the moment, a very small population. The other thing that I'd like to address today is that there are plenty of examples in other brownstone neighborhoods of freestanding structures that have been converted to apartment buildings while retaining the space around it. Where I work in Clifton Hill, there's a historic building called the Jam Home Lowell Ladies, which was preserved as an apartment building, which is also a similar size. The grounds around it were maintained. And also many churches in Carroll Gardens that have been converted to apartment buildings without their infrent being expanded. So I think the current structure could easily become either a school or apartment building of then its current neighborhood. I do want to say that I really have appreciated developers reaching out to me, whatever the decision may be, to work with us about obvious safety concerns because my existing east-facing wall is, was never meant to be the end of the line of rowhouses. And that is, is could be a problem. And finally, I just would like to ask that someone do some research and historic surveys of the area before 1910 to see, I understand the issues with the roof, the issues with flashing and water coming down, but we've also, in my house, where there's heavy rain, the water table rises up through the floor in puddles that are coming discreet, sometimes that can be quite severe. And I've been told by people whose families have lived on the block for a long time that there used to be a stream that ran down everywhere and townhouses are ending in a lake under the current school. So it would be great if someone could check that out, because that could make for interesting problems during any kind of excavation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wish to speak? I guess we'll have to respond with the comments.
I would first like to respond by thanking again all the people from the community board, the community district, who have attended and well-attended meetings to talk. And I think very constructive dialogue has happened, especially with the development of this passage space. We did, after the hearing, do some preliminary investigation and could not find any evidence of streams or ponds in the area. That doesn't mean that there isn't a high water table, which would certainly be investigated as part of any additional construction on this side. Secondly, the church, which owns the church and will continue to own the school building, has done a preliminary existing conditions assessment of the church. And their, their investigation, which is in a report that has been provided to the landmark staff that is not distributed around here, that report notes the similar deterioration, it is the same architecture, it is very similar brick, and using similar detailing. They did note similar diagonal cracking at lentils, there's displacement of lentils in the church. And so a preliminary estimation, as assessed, repairs at roughly $3.1 million. I'm sure that goes up over the years as that continues to be needed. The school building, we know, has interior wall issues. And the ground lease deal that has been arranged between the developers provides all of the rental income to this parish. This is not going to crisis and this, this money would be then available to the vestry of this church and their senior staff to determine how best to prepare the church building and to provide support for their operations. Their income is, as their representative said at the community board, their income is what they get every Sunday in the basket, which doesn't, just doesn't cover what's going on there. So I understand the comments about scale. I've been here. So I do understand that, but I really hope that people will take that into balance with the, that we.
The next question is, she, Michael.
Should you cut that off, this additional? Is there any more? I just want to, I just want to clarify a couple of things, just avoid misinformation. I think in some newspaper that there was a $7 million ground lease transaction. $7 million was not, I'm not exactly sure how they got that calculation. We have a grounds, a long-term grounds that's a perpetual stream of income. It's not a perpetual stream of $7 million. So I just want to clarify that that is not what transactioned last year. Second clarification was the mention of luxury condos. I want to clarify, this is a rental property and we are long-term owners of rental properties. And so he will be the neighbor, were neighbor, and the neighbor for the church for hopefully multiple generations. The money, again as Cheryl explained, this is actually a very unique, the money stays with the parish. And that is unique to the diocese of Brooklyn Queens, not like other churches, not like archdioceses in Manhattan. The proceeds of the real estate stays with the parish, whose real estate is mainly impacted. And you can go to a mass at the church and see the financials of the church. They actually need printed every Sunday now. So you can see their operating deficit and then we have the missions reports talk about the degradation of the church itself. And by the way, you can go to a mass there and see the degradation of the church, you can see the water infiltration. Another thing about contextual, I thought it was very important about when this building was built. It was a small school even for its time. So we talked about it being a modern building, being very small for a school. And we, and there were a number of schools that looked at this building and needed to have at least forty to fifty thousand square feet to make their raids work. But contextually, when this was built, this both, the building itself is small in context to its, its other schools that were built at the same time, likely to potentially have been phased, which is what Catholic church often did. They wanted to get the demand from the immigrants of so great that they needed to open schools, get bodies in the schools, and then they would expand as rates changed. And we checked with zoning at that time, this was the very first zoning, was it twenty, or sorry, yeah, sixteen, nineteen sixteen. And zoning could accommodate a school much as it could pose today. So I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. Also, in terms of estimation, we will not be able to be further in the school. We will continue to get rid of some build that's outside of the school, but that's actually, that's a requirement because it has construction debris versus the building. I just wanted to make a couple of clarifications.
How many square feet is existing building and how many square feet is in add?
Sarah, what are? Is there a half product garden set tomorrow? The existing is about twenty thousand square feet and the addition is ninety thousand.
Can you?
Ninety thousand.
I have a structural question. Structure, is the building, is staying, except for where it's being prepared? Do we build anything in common next to it? Do you like that structure?
Yes, with one. The, the building is a steel frame building with masonry plating. What they did was there are four columns in the center, very nice robust columns, that are transferred out to create the auditorium space on one floor. The structural engineers believe, we worked with them, that simply reinstating those columns, because there are foundations for them at the lower level, will allow the building to hold the situation.
Are there any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Two questions. So is there a renewed that ties of rental becoming to, or maybe it's a church, or is that just to be done as the church? that's just to be done as the church?
That, according to the church representatives and the negotiated this, the income goes to the church, but there is no deal that structures what goes to name and what goes to operations.
Second question. You said that there's an out, an exterior scandally deteriorated, which is causing havoc, is large sections of the, I'm sorry, are large sections of the exterior handling removed to?
Someone will have to be, if we need to do it. When Silman did the investigation, it was in 2011, right before the district was designated. And what we could see in there, they did probes, and they also did preliminary. Some of the steel is severely deteriorated, and the outer scandals, the other ones are okay. The outer scandals that seem to be the most at risk are the ones on the third floor, which is of course right in the middle of the bottom of the site. Which is why we have run out with five different bricks, and we have not made a selection yet because it's been too brave to really make a good selection. But we are confident that we can.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion to close the hearing? All clear. Any opposed? Okay, great. Thank you, and thank you all for those who spoke today. And I think I'd like to just direct our discussion in sort of two ways, and one is to talk about the idea of a visible expansion, and then two, you know, sort of then what's the size of it and the style approach, and then three, we can talk about the window door changes. The one thing I'd like to note is that in the summary in the designation report for this historic district, it specifically highlights St. Gertrude's Church, and how important the church is, and how very significant it is. And it describes the school and rectory buildings as being designed in a neoclassical style, in a restrained neoclassical style that doesn't compete with the church. So I think, for me anyway, with this particular typology, unlike a row house with a consistent street state, a visible expansion could be appropriate, as we've heard testimony today that other school buildings tend to be bigger historically, right in this area, and often sort of in, with sort of accretions added to it. So I think that, you know, the discussion is really about, is appropriate to have visible expansion, and then how, what does that look like? So, yes, Fred, would you like to start?
I'd be happy to. I think first you can look at this building either as such a crucially important piece of architecture, that you can view it as a rooftop addition and a side yard addition, which we all for do, physically as it is, or as I look at it, a building which can be added on to and become a different building, and incorporated the base of the original building. And often, I think we tend, particularly in brownstones, row houses, the form is the way we look at it and the way we should look at it. In this case, though, I'm persuaded that the building is such that it can be added on to with visible additions to become a different building. Now, that does not negate the idea of that its overall bulk shouldn't be weighed here. And for me, it's a little, it's a little too much. I'm thinking perhaps the top floor is either cut back or perhaps eliminated, and also I think this slide shows very well that the top floor of the side addition really should set down to acknowledge the lower scale of the townhouses. With regard to the windows, generally speaking, I think they've done a good job. I can certainly support the idea of changing the windows in the front, where the stair landing now exists. And I think on the side, there was some windows that were enlarged, but then I think perhaps working with staff, there are issues with regard to the details of those windows. That could be worked out with staff, but I think generally speaking, that those would be my thoughts.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I agree with Fred's comments, and I think that the side addition is too high because it's seven to scale. And I also think with a lot of the presence of the group population, I would pretend that the lower story, and actually that the first, first forward addition, push back to close to where that side addition is, because I think that would really eliminate, or perhaps eliminate, reduce a lot of its visibility on the front.
Thanks, ma'am.
I agree with Michael and Fred. I think setting back the move competition won't be enough, though I think it has to be eliminated.
The top floor?
Yep. I find this an interesting application, and I understand Fred's framing, take away because I agree with it, but when you're adding nearly 100% or 80% of the floor area, I mean, floor area building, it's a different building almost. However, I think that your project has sought very strenuously to make itself look like it really is just a addition, modest addition, that has to be not so modest. For me, what's, I think what's, I don't disagree with whether anyone's, well, I think what's , part of what exacerbates its effect on context is the wedding cake profile, and looking at the package, this is not a profile that was designated by Silman. This is a profile that was highly imagined by him in order to minimize the visibility of the hall, but for me ironically, looking at the examples of context given in the package, I find that the wedding cake kind of makes it have a more aggressive skyline, and there are other buildings that are this tall in the district more or less, but they're just simple boxes, and I think that the choice to do not one, to set that, kind of spotlights that wedding cake effect, makes it look not like a rooftop addition, but like a wedding cake building, which is, it means for the main body of the wedding, it exacerbates it certainly to remove the top floor, as others suggested, with, with leaping that. I think that the side yard is a kind of curious, that the position of the lower facade encroaches on the return of the decorative front facade. For me, I would have heard either the equileration of that a whole day, and bringing it forward, even to the point of bringing it out to the street wall where there's, there's starting out, there was a building there of that scale, or setting it back so that the entire decorative panel is around. I don't think that's going to be the other, but I think that I'd rather it be better than having a kind of semi-truncated panel.
I agree with Michael's last comment there. I think the, certainly you can fill in that gap and then put it back into the, into the issue most of us historically, but saying that, you know, suggests that it actually a lot to come out to the, to the laffon, and I'd be more comfortable with then capturing lost square footage by, by pulling it out forward. Right now, it creates a, takes a symmetric building and creates a very lopsided view. You know, keep looking at it from this angle, or if you look at it head-on, it starts to very waning on the left side. I also think, I'd retake off that top floor, that, that go, I have a three-story addition of the setback on the, on top of the left side there is also extreme, and in my way it's 95% more square footage. So again, if you can capture some square footage by moving that forward and lose, lose some of it, taking it off the top.
Sorry, again, except for X and then Y.
I'm pretty much with the comments in the sense of my initial concern with the side yard additions that just, in the middle of that, which one just really led to the decorative expression of the side of the building, I think they're pushing back. The one we've had.
Please, Jean.
So I agree with majority of these comments. I just wanted to add one more thing. I would move the side forward, because I appreciate, I agree with the dream, moving the addition back and force it on the top, because I think it's important to maintain, whether or not it was something there or not, I think it's important to maintain on the side of the existing building. I would, in addition to taking off the third top floor, also actually, all of the paint on the other floor, it's an addition, it's a, it's on the floor, so I would break it down, so that the two floors under, here, the, the, the.
Any other comments? Okay, so I think we're going to take no action today, and I think that it's clear that the top floor should be eliminated, and probably also the top of the side addition, and then I think you want to look at how you can simplify the mass and the remaining portions of the addition so that they are sort of more discreet, modest, and to relate to the neoclassical simple part of the building, and we'll see that really in just a while. Thanks.
And for the students, they really care.
That's the stuff.
Hey, I have a number two, obviously 19-27946, now picture of a certain degree of appropriateness in our borough of Manhattan, Block 89, Lot 36, 236 Fifth Avenue, Madison Square, and all of these historic districts. With our style, our building designed by, 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 2006, 2007, application of this to the strong, beautiful, and.
Do you want to condition a McBoy preservation stock? The subject premises is located at 236 Fifth Avenue, located between West 27th and 28th Streets, within the Madison Square and all of these historic districts. The application is to explore a painted wall mural at the south side. The American architect Tom Fennell is here to present a proposal further and answer any questions.
Comment about, and the design architecture, slightly simpler than the last app, and it's always great to present after share, but this is completely unforgetting. The, the property is on Fifth Avenue, it's one of the large, typical, roughly 12-story manufacturing office buildings that define the district. It has, so this is showing some other mural precedents for, and within historic districts, although there isn't one in this district yet. The proposal is for a, a non-advertising sort of mural going up on the side of the building. This is Madison Square. This is actually, this is showing some signage on the sides of buildings on Fifth Avenue, or, or another block south of this. These, this is today, some of the signs on sides of buildings within a block, or within a block. Obviously, these are old advertising signs we're proposing to have installed, it's not an advertising sign, it's a finite sign, or as finite mural. And these are other views of the district where there are large slots of side walls that are essentially, you know, white or buff, and covering up the brick. This is the, these are two historic photos of the building across it. This is, this is our building here, and there's, you can see the remnants of signage, a little bit there, that were here historically, but today there's no, there's no sign of any, anything on the side of that. So this is the proposed mural. It is essentially a sort of collage of, an interpretive collage based on the historic sort of figure, and it's made up of various pieces that all reference the district. So it's meant to be, it's a promotion of nomad of the district. It's overtly contemporary, but it's also made up of small pieces that are, that are significant to the district, and we have the historian here that worked with artists to help identify all of these pieces that make up the mural. And, and his work is included here, you know, each of these, each of these elements is identifiable, and is relating to something within, within the district. So this is the building itself today. There are essentially two large brick panels divided by a relatively narrow light well, and we're proposing for this mural to be installed in this panel closest to the street. So this is it. These are the views, starting at Madison Square, looking up at the visibility of this, and of course, the idea is that it is this one, but it's largely, it's most impactful, obviously, coming from the south, within, from the corner of Madison Park. Equally within the block east-west, it's only visible, it's only visible within that block, but that is the, essentially, the center of the district. And this is the artist who's competing in some of his work. It's essentially, what we're proposing is that, he does all this with spray paint and stencils, so it's all, it's all mapped out in advance. Obviously, the entire wall is scaffolded. We're proposing that essentially a white background be painted as a sort of canvas, and then he's given access to the site. I'm sure he works with some people.
Are there any questions?
A couple of questions related to the background. Are there other buildings in the district you know that have, if they're side yard, side walls? Maybe looking at photographs, they're supposed to be brick.
Most of them are brick, and if they're, if they're not an exposed brick, there is, it's basically a card. And I guess I'm curious, looking at the other examples of the artists working in the block, why you're choosing to paint the background, whereas in the other examples that you showed, the random condition of sidewalks, it would be difficult to, what we're doing. We have, we've discussed that internally, and there's a, there is a willingness certainly to have the background certainly be very quality, unadulterated, the, you know, the, I think the reason that we're bringing it forward with white is just that the image is really there, so there's some, some worry that these smaller details. So there's some, some worry that these smaller details of like the, the guys on their, their ridings wouldn't be visible if it was against a, they have a brick background. But there's certainly a willingness to, to do that, that's what, um, it's a permit.
What kind of paint is it?
It's red. This, the, the background.
What is the material? Is it acrylic? Is it polymer? What is it?
Honestly, I don't know if it's reversible. That's what I want. The, the, their, I don't know the answer to that, but I understand that at the end of, that, that it is a permit that is written that expires, that their obligation is to remove that. So we would, we would work with you to figure out what that specification is to have it come off without compromising.
Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah, I have one other question. Um, honestly, the artist is the interpretive side, but so when is the plan to make the infestation of the mural that's on it available to the public?
I, I actually don't know the answer to that. I mean, I, there's a, there's obviously a desire to do this and provide this sort of for the neighborhood, it's not an advertising sign that doesn't directly serve that building. I don't know if the owner, ownership has any plan to disseminate something to the general public to, to a lot of, I don't know. Good idea.
Are there any other questions? We'll go ahead and test him on you. Jesse Denham?
Jesse Denham, Historic District Council. This is a beautiful composition which is based on the same building district and is art for art's sake, no advertising. It is feared that the artist researched and thought way incorporated historic records into a temporary work. And the carousel that our ring with herself is a nod to the fifth album of yesterday. HPC is curious about the name on the artwork, however, it reads Nomad. Nomad is actually a distinct area in north Madison Square North Historic District. No one could be commissioned for thoughts that advocates the concept, on to test place soon for landmarking. Who is an athlete, at Fieldhouse, abosark duty by the same architect of this building. Is immediately threatened with demolition of Nomad Historic District. HPC is not used to critique the artist's work, only to comment on the technicality of neighborhood make. Those people in New York have been known to be sensitive about it. Thank you.
Thank you. You ready, Paul Verar?
Good morning. I'm George Alderar, a board member of Twenty-Ninth Street Neighborhood Association, which has been advocating for, uh, and for its manager, Madison Square North, which you just heard, Historic District, for at least ten years. I'm project head of this association, Save Jim Hannah Alley Initiative, and also a board member of the New York chapter of the Victorian Society in America, the advisory board member of the Historic District Council. And here today, speaking as a neighbor of two thirty-six Fifth Avenue, I live near East Connease Street. While it might be preferable to leave the wall, I can not compete with the Historic District's protective buildings. The owner is entitled to create a mural. I can think of no better subject. And this proposal is far preferable to multi-story distracting advertising. Also, having worked in communications throughout my career, including at this agency, I welcome the attention getting to us for a great Nomad Historic District, both landmarked and unprotected. Historically, the neighborhood in this building had posted lovely painted wall signs. In fact, the north side outside of the building has, I think, those sign has been noted, and perhaps this proposal will include highlighting or at least referencing that historic sign in the hour of the future, perhaps promoting Tin Pan Alley right on corner. Um, related evidence is, is a tribute to women, Nomad. I urge the owners to research and add reference to women composers of Tin Pan Alley, which they are exploring. In any case, this proposal is a great opportunity to educate New Yorkers and tourists about the important chapter in New York and American history that Nomad, Nomad District represents. To that end, I encourage the owners to explore all options for education and information sharing, including some captioning, searchable evidence, title, hashtag, QR code, and a URL leading to a website of information about the district and links to local historic sites, including savethimhannahalle.org. Uh, this would provide a great service for New Yorkers and tourists seeking to learn more about this Historic District. And we could make the mural a landmark in and of itself. And as I said, the commissioner also referenced, including an educational tool, information sharing, which you didn't know about. But again, I'd be happy to work with you on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? And we have a resolution from Community Board Five recommending denial of the billboard, finding that it would be highly visible and intrusive to the sightlines of the Empire State Building and the design and color palette. Our modern and contemporary design of the historic aesthetic of Madison Square North Historic District. Okay, would you like to respond to any comments? Are there any other questions in the afternoon? Okay, then may I have a motion to close the hearing? All in favor? Any opposed? So, um, would anyone like to start the comments? I mean, we certainly have a history of approving painted wall signs. And maybe just, Mark, I think, just, just to correct me if I'm wrong, I think that the landmarks commission cannot regulate content. And so in many ways, we would be looking at this in the same way that we would look at any painted wall sign on a side of a commercial district.
Um, that's, that's true. Um, I mean, I would think that to the extent that this is, we're looking, we're looking at this as, as more of an art project focused advertising, I think we can take that into account with the term size and other things like that. Because this is, and we should be clear, it's not a proposal to be swapping this in and out, this is really seen as installation. This is what it will be. This is what, how it will remain. And we, that would sort of turn this into, try and turn this approval to somebody else who would come back and give you a map at times. Yeah, idea, advertising, which is hard.
Okay, great. You can stop.
I think this is appropriate. Um, this artist has been tracked by the, and has been involved with the Historic District of the building to leave. And so it has, uh, just, uh...
No more?
I think it's pretty exciting. Um, I, I sort of agree with, I think Michael and I would ask a question about the white. Um, perhaps it could be toned down somewhat because of this jargon, but, um, I, I think it enhances the district, frankly. I would just, um, request again that you work with staff that we're using material that's not going to be irreversible, that it's going to break.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, uh, I support this, uh, for the same reasons I support ads signs generally, which is just as much because of the artistic feature and the historic context, which in this case is much, uh, more so because it's trying to reflect the Historic District in part of the city. So I'm very happy about the idea. I agree with, uh, personally, and I think that either we should go to a closer look, a very finish, or go to a, uh, somewhat more limited quality, as that plays commentary is quite, is, so that it's a very, uh, well, not attractive. It's not, I, I think, um, you should be able to be a little, so.
Great.
With regard to painted wall signs, it's probably easier to determine what we don't regulate than it is to actually describe what we do. Uh, and I think there's two rough standards, it appears to me, we have. One is a, a blending standard, which, um, I think we're addressing with our request that they go have two, a brick wall background or something like that. Uh, but the second is a reasonable proportionality. Uh, I think we try to define that with, uh, things like distances, kind of edges of walls and things like that. Now, I don't know whether this is an imperative applied with what we normally view. I don't know. So I would ask them to work with staff and be sure that this actually addresses the standard that we impose on everyone else's content, anyway.
Right. And I think, um, we do, usually with signs have, um, uh, sort of a standard proportional size that we, um, look at. And I think that Mark has explained that in the case of a one-on-art project, that we could look at it slightly differently. I think that maybe making the background a little more neutral, it might actually be more like a parched sidewall and may not read as big of a sign for that reason.
And that's, that's just the other example. I think, um, I think what John's saying is correct. We can be usually typically within these twenty percent. That's true. But that is also a basic situation where we're, we're visioning it. We've adopted that having a master plan where these are changing, we're not really, the content is definitely the color and all the other things, the things we don't want to be seeing. If we are seeing what it is, or in that context, it allows us to be, just to look at these slightly differently.
I just want to add one words to, um, it's already been said, just sort of clear. Um, I think a more neutral color, not a white, is, is absolutely necessary. And the size of the, um, uh, this layout of the voice for what we would only allow by the advertising sign to do. This isn't that. It's, it's hard. I think we have to have a say, as I said, and I think Mark has said, um, we can have it in, in conjunction. In this case, we should allow it to be quite visible. Uh, the size is hard.
Yes, sir.
I agree with you, Fred. It's not an advertising sign. It's something that's, you know, if anything, flooding and advertising is something to the district, it might involve it. So it needs more of a one-off. And we should go back to a more neutral color in the background. The white is still just, uh...
I, I agree with you, but I, I would urge them to try to figure out how to, I think that, that this concrete brick sidewalls is the future of this district. I think that, um, you know, looking immediately to the left and voting our story to see it, uh, the relationship between the painting and the sidewall is kind of, that's the way you understand, uh, the incursion of painted images into the district. So I think that, for me, I was strong since we got away with it. Out of the line it or something, it works, but that degree, it's at least the best.
Why? So, I mean, I, I agree. I think it's absolutely blind, it's very important for the neighborhood. It is a piece of art. But if the, um, I think the background's going to be modified, whether it's the color of the brick or something, uh, something new. I, I actually think that, um, the artist needs to be involved in what that is because this is a piece of art and it was designed as particularly, you know, we want to make sure it doesn't, in any way, negatively impact the work. So I'm looking for, you know, find, I'm finding what need to be tolerated about how, what, what that background is relative to.
Yeah, and I, I do think that, um, sort of going from a white to a more neutral and a parched look is maybe a simpler step that still maybe retains the artist's vision. I think doing something with brick might be something that would require a different approach. Um, so I think I can put it to you. We could vote it out today, but the market vision, I think we probably have enough to vote out with a kind of more neutral, uh, toned-down, white, off-white color, uh, working staff. Um, or, or come back if you want to re-study it. Okay, so we'll, we'll make a motion to approve it at that modification. Okay, good. This will be, thanks. To make the back.
All right. So as a matter of two thirty-six Fifth Avenue, Madison Square North Historic District. Uh, this is an application to install a painted wall mural. I note that the building's stone scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of Madison Square North Historic District. Uh, I recommend approval, noting that the work will be a secondary facade and will not alter, destroy, or conceal any significant historic architectural features. And the paint will be breathable and removable. That the mural will recall characteristics of painted wall signs which historically existed within this Historic District. And that the presence of the mural, which celebrates the diverse evolution of the Historic District, will support the, the special architectural and historic character of the Madison Square North Historic District. Um, I also find that the mural's expansive white, uh, background paint will draw attention away from the significant architectural features of the building and street scale. And therefore, the white background will be amended or changed for a more neutral finish, such as the wall paint.
All in favor? Seven. All right. Any opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners, I have a recent application for a corporate business in Manhattan, block eight of nineteen two eight six two three to two River Side Drive, located in West End Historic District. This is a Bozark style apartment building designed by George F. Paul, in eighteen oh five. The application is to modify and counter both of these.
Good morning, Commissioners. Elizabeth Sagan, preservation staff. The site is two oh two Riverside Drive, located at the corner of Riverside Drive and West Ninety-third Street in Riverside West and Historic District. The application is to modify an existing elevator bulkhead at the roof. The elevator bulkhead, present at the time of the designation, is currently visible from public or affairs to the west. The proposal involves extending the existing bulkhead by about eighty feet to allow for new machine room and elevator overriding. Here you can see some elevations to fit in the additional bulkhead plan. And the proposal is being reviewed by the commission due to visibility of the bulkhead extension. Uh, the existing bulkhead is visible from across the street along Riverside Drive, which you can see in the photo to the left, as well as across the street through the building's north corridor, which you can see in the center photo. Uh, the new extension to the fitted brand will also be visible from these locations. The extension will also be visible to the east from the corner of West End Avenue and West Ninety-third Street, which you can see on the right. And the applicant is here to discuss the proposal and answer any questions.
And are there any questions for the applicant? Please, I have one question. What is the, if you could also state your name for the record, please. What is the material of the, it's...
The first, uh, bulkhead is a hard gauge metal, dark, painted in black, and the, 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 the extension of that. Not whole, I mean, it's...
Yes, sir.
On page eight, turn to three, the stairs that the top of the bones on the west side of the bulkhead.
Yes.
Is there a page that looks a little less, this one?
Well, the first one was visible, not stairs actually, but visible to the upper left-hand corner. Mockup of one of the footpath. Um, current code, there's not, no, no, but allows for a ladder to previous level, getting access to the, uh, bulkhead, so a stair, Nomad.
I don't understand what you're saying. Stairs here to see cases?
No, no, no. The stair will not be visible below. It reaches the machine room itself. And like the level of the building, it is determined to the west end, which means that it's west end, we have a, looking east from Riverside Drive. None of that is visible. There is only a very minimal visibility, the magnitude of that stair from the, the north end of, uh, West End Avenue at ninety-second, ninety-third street. And again, at ninety-third street, you might have a slight visibility of that where the current building is.
And the one on three?
Yes. Correct.
Yeah. And number three, you're looking from West End Avenue, west, or the Roadhouses?
Remember, you do, come to the city of Portobello, so it does increase visibility, but it does not increase the ten in nature where it is not right to some extent. but it does not in peace of pen in nature where it is not right to some extent.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this application? Okay, we have a resolution from Community Board Seven, and they recommend approval of the enlarged elevator bulkhead. Any other questions? And so, may I have a motion to close the hearing?
No.
Call in favor, any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed. I think that this is a bulkhead that's seen from great distances, not directly over the primary facades. Most visible from West End Avenue, looking down at the rowhouses, you can even see the building that is being added. And you already see the existing bulkhead, so I think this, for me, doesn't have a lot of impact. Is there anything else? Great. So, Jean?
In the matter of nineteen twenty-eight, two eighty-six, twenty-three, two oh two Riverside Journal Act, Riverside West End Historic District, the building is a box style apartment building designed by George F. Pelman, built in nineteen oh five. The application is to modify and control both of the assets, by noting that the building's walls, the materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Riverside West End Historic District. I recommend approval on date. That the work will not alter or destroy any significant architectural features of the building, that the presence of the bulkhead will be in keeping with utilitarian new type installations typically found at the buildings of this type style and age, that the simple corrugated metal plating of the proposed bulkhead extension will match the design of the existing design of the bulkhead below, and that the metal stair will be, that a single design will not call attention to itself, that the bulkhead extension will only be visible over the secondary recessed courtyard and east facades from a leak angles to east and west, and will not be visible when viewed directly over the primary facade, and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the Riverside West End Historic District.
Second. Call in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, approved, thank you.
And for us, an application for us, as the name is amended, is back end of nineteen-two-nine-one-four-zero. This is ninety-one Central Park West Historic District. It's a new redstone style apartment building, proposed in style, always designed by Schwartz and Gross, built in nineteen-twenty-eight. The application is committed specifically to appropriate as nineteen zero-nine-eight-nine-one, towards this location.
Good morning, Commissioners, Elizabeth's Agent Preservation Staff. The item for use for ninety-one Central Park West, Riverside Central Park Historic District. The building is situated on the west side of the street, facing the park, which was sixty-nine and must study its history. This proposal is to amend certificate of appropriate against nineteen dash zero-nine eight nine one, issued on April fifth, twenty seventeen, with improved modifications to the standoffs from those at the penthouse, including changing the colored leaded glass to clear leaded glass at double hung windows, and retaining the dials of the upper sashes, and reducing the height of the state glass transom at the terrace doors at sixteen color level, which can be down here. The proposal also included lengthening the monumental state glass window and installing new state glass window at the tower. Since that proposal has changed, the applicant is now requesting to remove all leaded and state glass from the sixteen four, and install clear glass windows. The applicant is also no longer proposing changes to the windows of the tower, which will remain as is. If I get that, please, there are others from the proposal, any questions?
All right, everyone. My name is Mark, you're living from Shelter and Dell Associates. So, I'm just going to go back a few steps. So you understand the context here. The second image here, the original drawings from Schwartz and Gross, from this set of files, from the much paltry, um, of the Southern history, Christopher Wray's office, we've determined that the windows are of a generic sense throughout the building, from floor to the penthouse. There's no limitation from generations of these original drawings, that the windows at the sixteen, seventeen floor were originally designed to, by the architects when they renovated the cafeteria. The only logical explanation is that they were probably installed when the first owner of the penthouse moved in there, which did used to comprise the entire level of floor sixteen. This is now half of the penthouse, this is the east-facing penthouse. You can see that the windows marked in red are the windows that are currently, some portion of the state glass. This is the seventeen floor, the three windows here are much taller and grander, and one that's east-facing is quite already, we have no plans of touching that window, it has full exposure to the park, and the one on the left intact, as well as the one on the left, which is north-facing. South-facing window, we also made intact, because there's no state glass there, and we're not changing the old one. What you see in blue is the other half of the penthouse. Those windows are all currently clear glass. The only those in red is our half of the unit, which is divided into two pens, penthouse A and penthouse B. What we're proposing is on, is to take all of, everything that's red and make it fully, which is indicated this side. So all of that becomes clear glass. Again, as I mentioned, this is the drawing on the left, this is existing drawing, middle is perfectly blue, and on the right is the red end of the circle. On the corner side, there's all that long, long line of nine, because it's clear glass. And same, south-facing, existing perfectly, remaining. We were increasing the opening at the tower, the original permit, in this case, believing the entire tower alone on the north exterior side. These are all the windows in their current state, from the outside, as you can see there, in the same condition. Here's each window in its existing state, it's previously perfectly modified state, and it's proposed state. So on the basis that the windows are not original to the design of the building, and they, none of them on sixteen, which is still around here, are visible through any public warfare, we're proposing to allow the owner to have full views of Central Park. Just taking it through these windows, so you can see what we're proposing. And then here we get up to the tower level, which you can see that the windows are much more interesting, we're not touching these because of the visibility. These are some view surroundings, you can go out and check the park west, so you can see all ten photos, and no park above the penthouse is visible, most of them are half mile away, all the way, and the picture number ten is on the right, on the east side, which is obviously to that. Sine line diagrams, it'd be the same. And we can get into the details if we like, but that's really at the main point, is that these windows are not visible, they're not original to the design and the building. They are interesting nonetheless, they're probably, it was called somewhere in the twenties, we've had several experts to the site to determine when they were actually made, if they had been procured from the previous context in Europe, the consensus is known. We had a state glass expert up there that noted that Schwartz and Gross commonly commissioned a state glass firm known as Miguel de Senso, to recreate medieval style state glass for other buildings in New York City, and that most likely, the state glass that you see here, was comprised, it is either in Philadelphia or in a post of Brooklyn. But because we're not trying to eliminate the windows entirely, we have a plan to keep them at the building, in storage, and we have a letter from the board president, saving such, you can have that in your, in your package. So, we will carefully remove them, we will store them, we've sought out many different locations, higher listings, to see who might be interested in preserving them, including the Hearst Foundation, Museums of New York, New York Historical Society, Cooper Cupid, some of these, all of which I deny are requested housing for us, they have no interest in them, and have no value of living, sort of, for the, any display that Hearst probably commissioned to somewhat resemble what he was doing in California, in Cincinnati. You can refer to the letter from the board president, and the last one I'd like to try to make there, it's been a lot of interest in this property, we've had over a hundred people up there to look at this property, and originally, everyone that's seen it is totally uninterested in these windows, other than of course seventeen, you're seeing there, those who were made, and everybody just wants to go to the history that is Central Park and be able to see that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, so we'll go to Commissioner Monique.
Mr. Valpar. Mr. Valpar, what is the second of the architecture of the city? The Commission's twenty-seventeen decision in, it's written good of appropriate as nineteen oh-nine eight nine one, was a reasonable compromise of partial demolition, which involved retaining representative group of state glass windows described as relics of historic installation, while replacing some with clear glass. This was not intended to be a palliative to further iteration of the historic feature, which we do not find to be a reasonable request. Although the Wall Street Journal was unable to document it, there's a tradition that this apartment probably belonged to William Redmond Hearst, which would explain its singular and luxurious decoration. So delay the exterior manifestation of the interior decoration lends special character to ninety-one Central Park West. The sales video currently online further sensibly votes out that this apartment, with its sculptured plaster and woodwork, and its tower library with those elaborate state glass windows, is, quote, "a special and very unique part of New York City." Here, the coroner group representatives say, "It feels as if time had stopped." In nineteen seventy-nine, when the appeal of society for ethetical culture versus spat was heard, noting an argument that the building should not be designated because it had no historical distinction, Judge Solomon wrote in a much admired decision, "It's the preservation of landmark arts, or limited to only that which has historical distinction, or enjoys popular appeal. Much of what is rare and precious in our architectural and historical heritage would soon disappear. It is the function of the Landmarks Preservation Commission to ensure the continued existence of those landmarks, which lack the widespread appeal to preserve themselves."
Thank you, Mr. Valpar. Jesse Dano.
Jesse Dano with Exor District Council. I understand our testimony has been overtaken by defendants, as we understand the unit of soul this weekend, so bear with him, his testimony. The application should be denied. The adjustments to the glazing, already approved for its ancient brokenness, was an extremely clear compromise that preserved the artwork glazing, also allowing transparency with clear glass. These windows appear original, they were designed to be harmonious with each, with each other, with space. These windows are historic works for, that are repellent and noticeable termination of the building. They should not be discarded. And we object that the people proposed a facility of future sale. The proposal is something extraordinary, will add to the problem, and for one, as you was, the body lights not start using the park, as day of the still window, game ring buildings, the same era of alarming the park, finding the best view of the park in this apartment, from down at the outside, from the trap around balcony, which often is private, can around experiencing.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this application? We have a resolution from, up. State your name, please.
Hannah McDonald, I just want to say, as someone who's been in the apartment many, many, many times, the windows have definite impact on the light, you can't see through them whatsoever. So there is definite challenge for the person who actually does own it, and it's just specifically for the person who owns it. You can't see it from the street, it's not original to the building, and as Mark noted, that the interest in actual being able to keep those windows, there is no interest in it, because people want to experience the park, which is also our history.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, then. So we have a resolution from Community Board Seven, that disapproves the proposed replacement of windows and floors. Would you like to respond to the comments, their comments? Any testimony that you just heard?
Oh, no, I'd just like to reiterate that we, I would like to reiterate that we, we don't deny the fact that the windows are interesting, everyone knows they're interesting. We're not trying to throw them away, we're not going to demolish them and trash them in any way, shape, or form. We have full support of the ability to keep them in safe storage until we find a way to come home. As you can see, we tried immensely to find a place for them, to put them on display so people actually can see them, because right now, no one can actually see them. So it's sort of ironic that we're sitting here, having this conversation about windows, that no one can even see, except maybe you can get a couple of cool images on the line. But we're trying to put them on display publicly, and it's unfortunate that no one's been interested in them. It's probably because they have no prominence, and there's just not enough intrigue proving that they're there from any time before nineteen twenty. So, even bearing that in mind, we still think they're interesting enough to hold on to. The building tells a very, you know, popular story, that they had a beautiful marquee point elevator installed there. Elevator consultant line is completely ripped out, everybody on the board of the building was up in arms about it, they preserve all of it, and now they have a fully functioning elevator that was built originally after, after it was renovated. That's why they don't want to throw these out either, they just don't want that to be too on the risk on the owner going forward for the next hundred years, it just doesn't seem to make much sense.
Can you just go to the slide that shows the elevations of what we previously approved? I think there was another elevation that was a little bit.
Closer.
Closer, yeah.
So, this, at this scale, we don't have all four elevations, but I can go to each window with a different, I'll only go back there again, let's see. Now, that was just.
It's lower.
Okay. Right, so this is a globe of what each window was as existing, what it was before. So the difference, if you don't remember from the original permit, the only difference really between the existing and the permit proof was that you see the lightly colored glass that's outside under the domes, that was being replaced with clear glass. All the lead and iron and the domes were staying intact. So there was somewhat of a better view, but you're still in cage, basically. All athletic glass, whether it's the dining room or here in the living room where it becomes a diamond pattern, you know, you still can't see out in either of the first two scenarios. But because at the time there was interest, now there's just not. So that's why I'm coming for this.
Are there any other questions? So can I get a motion to close the hearing? All in favor? Can you oppose? So the hearing is closed. We would like to start on this. Yes, Andrew.
Yes, it's a question. There's a collection of landmark artifacts, and I was wondering whether they ever accepted in from private owners.
Are you thinking of a salvage warehouse that the commission had once? We don't, we haven't had that for years.
We have a thing with the tour, which Hearst set up for my right, it was Hearst. What, I'm sorry, I'm trying to put the code there. We toured a facility which was set up, I think, with the Hearst organization, that they don't need space for, landmarks artifacts.
No, no, that's archaeology. That's just our job.
That was the question. So we don't have anything similar to our architecture, so...
Okay, well, I think, you know, the commission reviewed this a while ago, and I think at that time felt that these windows were significant. At the time, we had the interior expert here to talk about the prominence of the window. And then the commission president felt they were significant enough to require the maintaining and modifying them to allow some visibility, understanding the desire to be able to see how it looked. So it was a compromise. And so I think as a body, I've decided already, these are significant. And so I think the question is, is there a further prominence that could be needed? Michael.
I think that... I think that the previous approval was pretty, pretty simple. The only place that I could think that... There's a strong argument for a certain compromise, window number six in the living room, which are the center, three, three, face, face of the park. It is a double con, it's fully, that it, if it does, it is a complete, complete space of the apartment. I could see maybe modifying number six, but other than that, I don't think so. Well, I think it's actually, it's, I'm not sure maybe the number is wrong, I'm looking at the floor plan, it's like two fives and two sixes. I guess it's door six. Okay, so I could see modifying door six so that, you know, the bathroom was, had its transom intact, but the floor was, would be clear, otherwise I think she's...
Yes, Jamie.
You know, I really appreciate the challenge of this. People who, people who buy organs, if you want apartments that are significant in terms of location and there's a potentially very valuable apartment, you want to have your apartment, do it on the one hand, on the one of use, there's a beautiful background there is here. And on the other hand, these windows have been determined by us or to be significant. I'm actually very sympathetic because we have been flexible. Developers have come in and renovated churches to be our homes. And we allow them to take out these, to take out the stainless glass so that the people who are going to inhabit the apartments, not only do they have life, which is very, very important, but they don't have to deal with the iconography that was originally installed. So I would advocate our building a little more flexible, impossible, so that we can enable this apartment to be what it is, which is, you know, a residential abode for whoever 's going to purchase it. That's it.
I had a thought, and I'm not sure I like it or dislike it, just want to throw it out there. Could we allow them to take these leaded glass, or we think it's a good idea, to take these leaded glass panels, convert them into kind of like inner light casement, or, you know, physical casement, and have an outer light casement that will be fixed glass, that they could open it, close it, they could either open it to the interior or close it, you know, you could have a side screen door, you know, where they would protect the stuff to stainless glass. And if you replace, maybe it would allow them to open, they can have their view, close it. Throw that out there.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we have a kind of a history of approaching it different ways. As you said, in churches, we've allowed for the adaptive reuse and removal of stainless glass, or similarly, we make certain proportions of it, or plastic proportions to clear, powder proportions to clear. We have also allowed for taking the stainless glass and inserting it within the new window or behind another window. So that's another approach. And then we've also allowed for, particularly in instances where it's not visible, we've allowed for several removal as well, or partial removal, so lower sash or door reuse or some of that. So I think that our past history gives us a little bit of flexibility here and...
Yes, right.
I think the last two speakers, my colleagues, Jamie and Michael, have come up with, in the church, I mean, churches, it was certainly a long process, and very carefully done, but sometimes not completely removed, but nonetheless, so that we've been flexible. And Michael's notion of using windows or creating windows, so that they're still in the apartment, but maybe can be opened or moved, or moved aside, maybe they're pocket doors or pocket windows or something, it can be created, so that they're not removed, but they also can be moved out of the way. The occupants' desire, if that exists, would be a opportunity to use in the park, also rather important for historic landmarks. So I think maybe working carefully with stamp, it could be a way of allowing both hands for one side than either one.
I agree, but I think we have to do, if we're going to allow some removal, we should be able to say how much, and then what percentage needs to be retained behind some of the doors. So I mean, we could, actually, look at the elevations again, this is the window number four, which is the one that indicates the view of the gate.
The lower elevation.
Okay, so the account door and the dominant character will...
If they can figure out a way to technically keep them operable, I say they should hold on in their original condition, they can have a conversation.
I agree with Michael. There's a way to do what you suggested, I'm fine with it. But we, in the previous hearing, we actually already applied, stamp, you were beginning suggesting would apply, when we came up with the compromise, we came up with, based upon exactly those principles. So I don't see we were going further out of all that, as you say, I'm fine with the idea of figuring out a operability, you know, or additional painting glass method, getting them what they need, which is basically a view, and getting us what we need, which is material.
Okay, so I think that it sounds like today we make a motion to approve of the modification that they need retained, a operable, with a clear operable door in front of it, right?
I mean, is that even possible? I mean, maybe...
It's not perfect, so...
I mean, we, all right, but why not be possible?
They have to, they have to do a rec... Visit where it is placed in the opening, so there would be a careful adjustment there. I want to be...
Sarah?
Yeah.
I think this is more than, I would just think that, because this is a very unusual idea, we've never done before, I'm wondering if it makes sense that they explore, that people later come back and show the commissioners so that we all can see what that solution might be, and see whether we think, A, it's unique, this one, it's okay, but it's not, but just so all the commissioners can get a sense of what that solution might entail.
Yeah, I think so. Have they made, they made, you know, create a solution that affects weeds every once in a week?
All right, so we'll take no action today. We'll send you back with some next words.
Number one is being overlooked for last minute, we might have two or three, three ten west fourth street, building of the George's historic district, this is out in this latest event, back in nineteen three one zero six nine. This is a late couple style, but possible, eighteen twenty seven, three eight, reputation is tremendous, it's a particular, yes, nineteen thirty one three two three, issued on May eighteen, relocated, brick, the house plus fireplace at the roof, and the south lot lawn, and one displayed on the...
Good morning, commissioners, change for sale or preservation staff. The application before you is to modify and approve rooftop addition and placement of the gas lit fire pit to make it more visible as seen in this render. Three twenty seven west fourth street is at the east side of west fourth street, invisible from the corner of west fourth and Jane Street and the six-way intersection, six-way intersection of fourth, Jane, and eighth, Jane Street and eighth avenue. The rooftop addition was approved under certificate of appropriate, this nineteen eleven three twenty three. After any time of the approval, the commissioners ask applicants to make the height of the visible. So this is what was approved, and this is what we propose. So the architect, Martin Cox, is here to answer your questions and briefly go over the presentation.
Do you think we need to go through the presentation, or are there any questions? I think we approved this visible addition, we'd like to make a change, and I think it was because it was seen against the background of the tall building, this little profile was locked up from the studio, and the dark material also went in the way, and so the extension to create the... Art is too new with the origin station right on the wall, that also led the way with that symbol, so is there any questions? So, it's a, it's a miniature original of Jesse Dano, and we did not issue a hearing, so we'll go ahead and make a motion, John, I guess it's your turn.
In the matter of document number LPC nineteen dash B one oh six nine three twenty seven west fourth street in the branch of historic district, the application is to amend certificate of appropriate nineteen dash eleven three two three issued on May eighteen, two thousand seventeen, relocate a brick, correct, brick gas fireplace at the rooftop of the south lot lawn to be more visible in front of the lot lawn. I note that building style, scale, materials and details are one of the features that contributed to special architectural historic pattern of the branch of historic district. Approval noting that the relocated outdoor gas fireplace with its brick construction will be seen in the context of the raised chimneys and the neighboring rowhouse and other rooftop operations, helping these elements receive their view, and that the brick decoration will block views of the previously approved metal and glass stair of the building.
Thank you. All in favor? Can you oppose?
During the gen of the application, four eight street, certificate of appropriate is the blow in Manhattan back in nineteen two year three six eight, since coincidentally west hall industry, located in the historic historic district, it's an apartment house designed by Schneider and Richter and Hearst in eighteen eighty nine and altered in the early twentieth century. The application is illegal as a sidewalk and hindable, present in the west, this is a project.
This item was read into the record on September eighteen, so can I have a motion that was in here? Second.
All in favor?
All right. Good morning, commissioners, Katie Wright's landmark staff. Twenty seven west seventh street is located in between fifth and sixth avenues of the relic relations storage district. This proposal is for legalized alterations to the upper portion of the facade and replacement of windows. On the left is the tax photograph, and on the right is the designation photograph. As you can see, private designation, much of the historic detail, it was removed, facade was painted and cordless, removed as well. In the nineteen nineties, the owner of the building received a search of appropriate this to address violations to alterations to the ground floor, including painting it in an off-white color, adding new ironwork and adding posts and doors around. Commission found that this work did not remove any historic fabric and that the bystone color base was similar to other buildings, apartment buildings on the block. This work was already approved in the nineties at the ground floor. So the owner would now like to legally allow his alterations to the upper portion of the facade. This includes stripping paint from the brick facade, adding brownstone colored cast stone cutaways, and rebuilding the parapet as well as replacing windows throughout the facade. The applicant is here to present. Good morning, commissioners, ladies, gentlemen, and foundation consultants that the owner attracted, taking through human process. So as Katie already described, this building is the branch of historic district, it's on the north side, plus eleven, fifth and sixth. At designation, it was pretty much a sort of facade. So, yes, fortunately, most of these, these details that you see in this very ornate, sort of clean up, finished, facade was lost by designation. What remains were some brick cor, some brick corfling, some tarmac details for the top of the facade. Here's the building in nineteen eighties, tax photograph, and here it stands today. So yes, what you are looking at today is everything from four, two, three, four, five, six, so the entire facade... So, the entire facade, um, all of this work was done without my permission, including the installation of new cast stone details at the windows, some of these, some of these, um, bands appear in the groundstone that had been revealed, probably, um, third quarter where it was taken off. Um, and then this groundstone has also been painted over, like, this, these bands, that one. So, um, the brickwork, I have to say, is, is very high quality, especially if you actually target, I'm sure, that. Again, as Katie described, this is the existing portion of the ground floor, which was legalized previously by my permission, uh, historic remain of the artwork. Um, this is some close-ups of the windows, windows themselves, which are also subject to your review. They are wood, they have nicely profiled, um, brick walls. Those are the close-up views of the windows. Close-up view of cast stone installed. Um, I'm showing you this because this obviously is a real issue, commissioners doing here and that, um, these windows have an arched opening, a straight head that's visible from the street, but please note that in the interior, these windows do have straight heads, so that's why they were installed that way. I just wanted to share the, the nice brickwork of the apartment, which, um, you know, in a way, it does recall a crowded, empty building because it is a nicely detailed apartment. Here's what I was mentioning, there are, you know, very few collecting original terracotta pieces that request that this is the top floor. And just to give you some context, here's some photographs of other apartment buildings, similar scale, similar vintage, that you found throughout Rancho Historic District. Um, this one was of interest to me, relating the brickwork on this, on this building to once again to wear the place where you see this, you know, really a lot of, a lot of the done sort of tax gear wear. Um, so, that to me, is a small instance where it's, the work on this facade while not reproducing the historical edition, which relates to some work you find elsewhere in this district. Um, if you'd like, I can also read this, the very short statement on this building from the designation report, in case that may help you. This six-story brick apartment house built in eighteen eighty nine displays all the vestiges of the detail, its original design by Schindler and Reiter, as remodeled in the twentieth century. It has a simplified entrance, an entrance floor, smooth stucco, and vertical tier of rear windows rising up each side of the facade. This unobtuse apartment building may be said to have been absorbed in its non-compete simplicity by the architecture of the surrounding houses on this street. You have to love the nineteen sixty nine designation reports. So, um, that's simply our, our proposal discussing, I think, this work in the legalized service. Thank you.
So, presumably, this is not the same owner as owned the building in nineteen ninety six?
I'm actually not sure.
Yes.
The owner's here, and he says it's.
It's not the same owner, or it is the same owner?
It is the same owner, sorry.
Same owner, so they violated it back then, knowing that they had to follow our rules, and they violated again. Just be polite to try to stand, that's what I, all right.
Well, I can tell that that violation from the nineteen nineties wasn't, I think, any of the, I think that wasn't rectified until a decade or two later. Um, and also, if you'd like to mention that this is sort of a beneath situation, you know, the property owner is also a builder, and also a construction company. So, I think that what probably wasn't, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, I think what happened was they went ahead and did, saw work, and did have to go outside, consultants telling them they needed to get some permits. So, I think that's what it stays.
I have one question about the actual, the, the bands that go across onto the side here, are those new or were they underneath the paint? Because I don't see banding on the sides of the facade in the designation photograph. I presume that it's kind of recovered.
Yeah, it's hard for me to tell because they, they have a paint finish on. So, my assumption was that it was groundstone that was embroidered in the, the facade of being, you know, cleaned of one of the coating, was on its sixties, um, but the tears are just special. I can tell you that the details, the spanvils and the pendants, um, the arches, and the windows, those are definitely cast stone.
Okay, any other questions? All right, is there anyone who wishes to speak on this application?
I do. Jessica, for the torts, I think, it's counseling. Uh, while we do not approve the work to rise to level of appropriations, we regret that the applications workers undertaken left the guidance of my permission and staff, that would be a great and better call.
Thank you. Um, we also have a resolution from Community Board Two that recommends development of the application unless, A, a heavy cornice with reference to the certain photograph is added, um, B, the overall design of the facade is carefully considered, and the odd surface mounted pendants over the windows are removed, C, that the curved top sashes are, that curved top sashes are installed in the curved window frames, um, D, the ground floor is unified to the upper floors by exposing the brick or plating in it, in groundstone, and, uh, those, those are the conditions that, um, they would recommend denial unless those conditions are met. Would you like to respond to any comments?
Regarding the windows, um, I think the owner would be available to replace the windows with arch openings so that the windows that they ever sashed, they, they may follow the, um, from the street, if you follow the, the curve of the arch. And, and you guys know that that could be done by installing a panel, um, possibly only a, an existing stash. Um, as far as the cornice goes, um, if you look at this building again, again, it's like the nineteen twenties, twenty thirties, but I, I do think, I see a relationship between the, and this building and this district, and this under this parapet. I'm just trying to get some close-up view of that. Parapet, that's the name. Um, it is really nice brickwork, you know, and I think it's been well done, and I do think the nation can be part of that.
All right, thanks. Are there any other questions?
I suppose it's the obvious question of the owner, which is, why did you do all of this work, couldn't decide there, um, without consulting with the partners? And, I don't know, in historic, it's not like we're necessarily just like, this is not.
Would you, the owner, like to answer the question?
I'd enjoy it.
No, I'm still going to go.
Questions? Wait, did you give that personal? Yes. The instruction under was all, um, under a local law.
Please say your name, who you're.
Dr. Shepherd, who will be, um, most serious in terrorism attractors, on the property suits, uh, twenty three. Um, we've been playing catch-up to the local law, eleven, had two engineers. Um, we've had violations, scaffold, building, at the time, um, we had a lot of activity in the building, being, what I say, uh, so, um, and, when we got on the building, um, I had my masons start to work on it, and we've had issues, you know, over a period of years where, uh, continuous spalling, molding, brickwork. And the original work that was also done by my family that designated, um, it was done, you know, extremely, and it's recorded, too. So, it was a dangerous problem, not continued. So, uh, what we did was, we did to the, to the point, was that, uh, it was taking up to, uh, to, we would stick it in the old family, uh, separate shed, which became a full scaffold. And when, um, when they said, well, you know, we need lentils because it's not sensitive, you know, so we went to, um, probably erased the, uh, silver hairs, and decided to move ahead, and I figured out it wasn't for any harm, as the word jumped in the fifties by actually moving back things that I remember, the room building, like the arches, and that is, so I made that decision. And, uh, of course, it's not, and all I can say is, uh, that's what we do.
Okay, but you understand now that any exterior changes and over repair work do, does require a permanent, um, reaching out to us really in the process before we go to work. And if you have an emergency situation, we can also work with you on that, John.
Right. But also, you know, the, uh, thing about the ground floor, in nineteen sixty, I guess, about, remember, we didn't do any ironwork. Um, actually, if you go back to the picture from the fifties, you see that it, it was sort of like a big box in front of you, street. All that ironwork actually, uh, we put in the sideboard, and they were, uh, put the other sideboard, and that was that box, and we, well, the whole, the whole ironwork, spring work was still underneath, so it was just a stop, so it was there.
Okay, so, are there any other questions? So, can I motion to close the hearing? Sorry. All in favor?
Just to quick mention that the ironwork is currently in violation.
So, the work that we're looking at today includes the, um, work from the second floor up, rule of paint, the addition of cast stone details, and some painted groundstone, and a little, so, how much, partially, those. Uh, and I think, you know, it's, it's always unfortunate when owners don't come to us in advance, um, because while you may be putting a lot of investment into your property to do your right thing, their property is still not always comply with our guidelines of, and we're in a difficult situation. So, um, we're now looking at it after the fact, and asking commissioners to think about whether they would do this work, if they come to us for the fact. So, Michael, you want to start?
Um, this is a hard one because I think that, on the macro level, the work that the owner did, uh, in the right direction. I think that, that unfortunate part of it is that it's clear that the owner owns the building, wants to take care of the building, absolutely the building, you know, mason who was doing more or less, took the work, spending money on things like arch, arch lentils, old things, all this stuff, and had he reached out to the commission, that money could perhaps have been better spent, without spending extra nickel, gotten a product that would have been closer to what the commission would have included in the first. Uh, that said, I think that, um, for me, the, uh, the main bulk of the work is approvable. Uh, I think that, um, the cornice is not approvable as is because it lacks the depth that the original had. Uh, I think that all the key to the work is there and have a sheet metal cornice above it, or integrated into it, in such a way that it calls the depth and shadow of, of the original cornice, uh, perhaps according to that. Very, very, I think, shapes that have, uh, gentleman photographs. Um, and I think the other area to look at is if, if we're going to legalize the shaft of a building that is intended to resemble its original, uh, pan style, the base, where at least the street has to be able to, uh, have, or the scope of work in the base, have to seek to integrate it into the building it has already created above this, whether that is official, uh, stucco type work to recapture some of the detail, whether that is modifying the openings. I, I would not, you know, see to prescribe that, but I would say that the base, the base, you know, they did the work on the other, on the upper level without permits to make it look a certain way, and then it takes the base and all the glory.
Are there any complaints? I mean, I think that given the condition it was in at the time of designation, is the other reason we have the ability to be a little more flexible and not require an exact coordination of what is there, and that many of these details are consistent with, with style and age of the district, but I, age of the district, like this in the district, but I, I agree, I think that there are certain things that would, would fully realize that. I think, um, adding cornice would do well on the top and, and integrating the base, even if it just color, sort of like to the groundstone, uh, trim on the upper floors would help in a long way. Others have any feelings about this? Okay, so, is it Ann, is she going to make that motion? Yes. So, there are other, we're just now, we're just gonna.
Oh, and we, um, we're going to address the arch change in the doors as well, which I think we all feel should be not trying to have a large, long story.
In the matter of document number sixteen two eight three six eight, three twenty seven West Fourth Street, Rancho Historic District. The application is to legalize the sidewalk, and we will present without my permission, commission, permits. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are one of the features that contribute to the special architecture of the historic character of the Rancho Historic District. I recommend a full of modifications, citing that the building is all for constructive detail on the designation, and it will do not cause loss or damage to any historic features. That the paper will be subject to gentle manner without causing damage to the facade, and in the long term, the health of the land will be careful of moisture and the preservation of the basement. That the groundstone color cast stone, yeah, proportion of the building is out of proportion to the, sorry, which was a big redstone original. That the presence of bands, arched openings, and profiles of windows above the arched openings, are giving aspects of the original design, the documentation, and I just. The profiles, details, texture, and finish of the cast stone recalls aspects of groundstone elements found in buildings of the ancient style within the historic district. That the replacement windows match the historic windows in terms of configuration and operation of the materials, that the dimensions, finish, and physical proportions of the windows recall such aspects of the historic windows, and that this work is not to be the destination of historic buildings in the future. However, I find that the combination of finishes with groundstone color and cast stone upper floors, and the white toned paint, the building base is not keeping the character of the building, either on the intention to be on basis for building. And that this barricaded windows in the arch openings shall, and according to the report that the parapet do not match the historic conditions that are easily called, relatively related to the facade of the facade. Therefore, I recommend, that the building base be painted to match the best of color and the best of upper floors, to better integrate the changes to the other stories, creating a wide, homonymized appearance throughout the facade, thereby minimizing visual impact on the form without permits. That wood trim be added to the arch windows to help to follow the appearance of the arch, and that a simple cornice compatible with the design and materials of the building be added to the stable, the presence, or whatever.
All in favor? Can we impose? So, that's two of the applications.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, so, next item, I have the fourth, and I have the eighth, and I get this one submitted, um, back in number nineteen, two seven six two seven, fifteen oh one Broadway, uh, building in, in, in my mark. This is a fancy, cozy, style-inspired skyscraper designed by the lab of craft, two hundred and twenty six, twenty seven. The application is to administer the certificate of appropriateness nineteen two one five six two, for master plan, getting a future installation of signage, and so, and, and.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Fifteen oh one Broadway is an individual landmark on the west side of Broadway and Times Square. The proposal is to modify a master line for signage of the area of building and the brick facade, to include eliminated signage appliances. to include illuminated signage appliances. The master plan has preceded a previous master plan for signage which approved of plastic lenses with lettering at maximum height of two and a half feet tall. The master plan allows for lettering of a maximum height of five feet tall and includes a variety of signage, including neon, LED and exposure light bulbs. One of these signs was installed in nine compliance and is shown in this presentation. Bob Barnes is here to explain the desired changes. Thank you.
Bob Barnes, we told you Lawrence, the architect of the building of fifteen oh four. What's happening here is some of the respective tenants were objecting to the fact that they had exposed bulbs and the exposed lights. What we have proposed to them was, again, we're showing you in here the history of the signage for this building and some of the signage that's in Times Square. This is now, you can see, there's a lawn changing. Now here's Yankees street. This is similar to the signage that we're looking for approval now. So the tenants who have certain writing, a certain type, a certain style of sign, they can put that signage up and they don't have to use the help to do something similar to this where we're showing illuminated bulbs, different color bulbs. This is, you can see lids, lids was done in compliance with the previous drawings. This other sign was put up, it's a pop-up store, they put it up there without any pool. I don't believe they filed it. But that would be similar to what we were talking about in terms of allowing other tenants to have the signage. Signage like that could also be red, it could be green, orange. So we're basically trying to go back a little bit to give more flexibility to the tenants in Times Square. And Times Square has all types of signage. So look at the buildings in Times Square. Many buildings have multiple styles of signs. So we're trying, again, storefronts, I've presented before, the storefronts have been followed completely or we did it. But again, signage can, our request is that we allow the signage to be more flexible so that the tenants can come in there and have the signage that they need for their brand. Now, this is some of the signs that we've been presenting last time. Some of these can be, again, solid surfaces, illumination behind them. This is also what we presented the last time in terms of the types of signage that we were talking about. So you have exposed bulbs, you have signs that look like neon and LEDs. So basically, that's what we're asking for. And here's Times Square totally illuminated and came to public attention one sign to the other. Can you discuss it?
Just to make sure we understand, is the size of the sign screen, are you requesting to change the size for the master plan, just the length?
The style.
The style.
What you're seeing here, lids follow that, right, they have exposed bulbs. Now lids can also be done with different color bulbs. They can also have LED floating within that so that they can go differently. The other sign is a solid surface, illumination behind it. So some tenants, based on their brand, they plan to be able to follow that. They may not be white, they could be red, they could be green. Again, we're trying to let them, or within Times Square.
Oh, you know, the commission has a long history of this building and has approved master plans for the storefronts, signage, as well as the recreation of the marquee allowing illuminated LED signage within that and the signage on the corners of the building, all recognizing this context in Times Square. So this last amendment is to the master plan that the commission previously approved for the signage which allowed for exposed, an exposed light source within letters on a certain size, but could be any font and could be a variety of colors. So the amendment is just to have the plastic lens over it, it's supposed to expose two of the bulbs.
We're testing the plastic, could be glass, could be something that was appropriate for the color, but it wouldn't be a surface.
Genius. So just to clarify, the lids, will be approved prior to that?
No, it is staying.
It's staying. So the master plan allows for a variety of side signs within a certain height, prescribes a height and a maximum height, and it allows for illuminated signage, but with an exposed light source. So the amendment is to the master plan would allow for the option to continue with those types of signs that have already been approved in addition of solid face signs.
But not to allow them to keep putting up signs that are not even applying to the master plan and come running back to us when they're a major landlord or they should know already since they've been back and forth and gone. And they couldn't possibly not know that somebody is putting a new sign on their own building.
The landlords and the people that manage the building, they've got, they need to tell what information is needed and they just ignore it. So we're going to tell us to take it down to the tenant, but again, it's ownership that owns the building. We don't own the building. So we're trying to do this in terms of being more flexible with other tenants that will be coming into this.
I hear you, but you know, we're much more used to having, you know, individual homeowners who are familiar with the rules come to us and say, you know, we're in violation, I'm sorry, as opposed to, you know.
Right, but this isn't an application to legalize it. I think all of the signs actually have been installed in compliance with the master plan except for this one pop-up store.
And then we would like, we would like the other signs to allow that flexibility. I've been working on this building for thirty years, I've been in many times. I was six foot two when I started and I'm thirty two years later. This is where I am, thirty two years later. So try not to make this shorter, please.
I have another question. So what I'm seeing here on page eighty-nine is a proposal for other signs for worldwide with modifications to the master plan. Now, the, when we first, we, you know, these golds were of a look in my what you might have thought about it individually. I'm not going to comment until we get some comments. But what I'm seeing here now is a new uniformity. So I guess my question to you is, I mean, this is, a master plan has some kind of uniformity. If you, I believe you might be proposing really a non, a modification that makes this a non-master plan. It's like a hodgepodge.
But this is what we presented first time, we're here with all the signs. This was presented with the tools to mission, letting everybody know that there are different fonts, different sizes and different styles, which is part of the master plan. I just wanted to, I got a definition of a master plan here, if we have trouble with community board. It says, a master plan, a detailed plan for doing something that will require a lot of time and effort and a plan giving overall guidance. So it doesn't mean that everything has to be the same. We're just setting up procedures that have to follow so that they can use their, their style, lettering, their branding, any of the different colors. But this is definitely requiring our original presentation.
I'm sorry, just to add to this sheet. This sheet was primarily used to just show the height of the signage because you were approving from a previous approval of two and a half feet to five feet with capital letters. So that's really what this is showing. The past approval was a variety of signage, a variety of lighting types, who not with plastic lenses, plastic, without lenses.
Without lenses, right.
For use, master plan did have lenses.
Different.
Right, so some of the, if we go back, you see, is the signage that was there before?
Before, right.
Yes.
Now let's go back to the old goals, please. Right, no, no, the other one.
The other one.
Yeah. That's what we approved the last time. And there is, in my mind, a consistency. Everybody's local, everyone's local, but the look is a look. So, and it's, to me, seems consistent with what we normally approve in a master plan. So I appreciate what you're saying, which is, I want to, you want to give the tenants flexibility, but I'm not understanding how, how there was some consistency, except that they're there.
Oh, but the illumination, yes.
That's the only consistency.
Well, again, the signage that's on these buildings now, we're not all the same. So you're actually giving a little more flexibility, but these signs, storefronts are not historic. The signage is not historic. It's in the middle of Times Square, but you've got illumination and signage all over the place. Personally, again, excuse me, I don't think that we have a different signage here that's going to make a difference really because of the building, the cause of its location in Times Square.
So, right, so the master plan has allowed for bulbs, but also the tubes, exposed tubes. So it did allow for a couple of different looks. And so I guess the question is, is one more look going to change how you experience this building? You know, I think that in the context of Times Square, it may be that it doesn't stand up out as much. But I guess, you know, it's individual landmarks that we're looking at for, because how that led would change the effect of the sign on the building. Or, you know, is it one more, one more type to sort of to be the point for you in the master plan? We've already allowed a certain size here. And then if to be another type to be the point, one could think about a different size for different types of illumination, that's another way to go. Does anyone else have any questions? So do we have a motion to close the hearing? All favor?
I agree.
I'd start the session. Yes, ma'am.
I think that it's included because it's just an alternate type of lighting that does not have the bulbs. I don't see that many of the bulbs are going to be different. And most have LEDs or anything anyway, so I think the size and proportion is the same and it's just the illumination that's changed.
Yes, ma'am.
I think once, if you want us to go forward, then we'll probably opt to have amendments and that's the third signage technology now. And I think that can be against the idea that the master plan was set up in that way to know to create a good way to meet this way to recall the original design by Times Square. So I think that I would not sit down for a change.
Yeah, I agree with that. And I think the whole point was, of the particular approval, was to allow as much leeway as we could in terms of matching their old or whatever thing, but to retain some form of vintage kind of image, that's a sort of texture. And so there is a line, which is to say, you know, at some point it no longer, it's not regulated at all. Because it is an individual landmark, you know, and yes, it is Times Square, I understand. It's my gift, they've gotten a ton of leeway on this.
Well, when I voted to approve the last one, I didn't feel that it was really approving a vintage book. I felt that it was something in a very, very emphatic amount of lighting in general. That I felt like, no, we're looking at the context of Times Square and therefore I can approve something that is much more vital than you would normally approve on a historical building. And I don't think that having a backup science, you know, a lease on, or might be a lease on just to come back to it anyway, but it's not open bulbs. It's not what I was focusing on at the time. I really questioned how much of an impact and vibrancy and so on gets this historic building. Is that a problem? And I decided, no, because of the context of Times Square. So I could still approve it.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to point out that, you know, the Times Square that we know and either hate or love, depending on whatever, was the product of everybody doing their own thing in their own way to create as much attention as they possibly could for their place of the product. Then it all fell apart, as we remember, new buildings were built. In some cases, much larger buildings that had never been there before. And now we had a whole layer of signage requirements. These were requirements out there, the buildings here, I know how prescriptive they are. So the new Times Square that we have now, which I will differentiate from the old Times Square, is much of, is a product of prescriptive signage on buildings as well as the buildings itself. So I think it's okay, the prescription of signs, and I think it's produced a pretty exciting place. And I think that the connotation of prescription, not just anything else, is okay. I just want to give that kind of bigger picture to the whole thing. Therefore, I think our signage requirements should be, they're not changed.
To me, what creates the uniformity, what creates the master plan here is two things. First of all, the railing system to which the signs are attached. Second, limitations of size and of style that is, may not be a light box with someone's branding popped in on piece of Lexiglas. These are individual letters. And I think that going to Fred's microhistory, I think that this building itself has a nano history. Within that microhistory, right, it's, this building was remarkably uniform in its storefronts for a very long time, deep in to the more chaotic period that Fred notes. Well, before the sixties, you know, where the signage was very, very, already was very elaborate and well-known. This building, this particular building had remarkably uniform, rather genteel signage. That said, we give buildings, even landmark, individual landmark buildings that have retail components, a fair amount of leeway when it comes to how the storefronts are treated and much of the historic material is gone. So I think that whereas if I were, you know, if I could wait a while, I'd try to restore some of the historic stuff here. I don't think there's precedent for it in the commission's way of handling this building or other buildings of its kind. And so I think that the change is relatively minor. I would suggest that what kind of separates a really crappy looking Lexiglas lens from a less crappy looking one has to do with the thickness of it, the size of it, the way it's, those are the techniques that, you know, with that example of the Red Script, the reason that Yankees looks better. the reason that Yankees looks better than the red one, is, has to do with the quality of the sign, thickness of the Lexiglas, things like that. But maybe, uh, the staff can try to set some standards with the applicant.
I think, so, I, I agree, actually, that the uniformity of this building and its signage is very clear. And actually, in Times Square, Old Times Square, those factors are. Well, we can take great pains in, whether it's in a historic district or on a historic building, to, um, to add some kind of, um, formal, um, break, some regularity to what happens at the street level at retail. And we have a master plan here. Now, if, uh, I feel that so, if the applicant is coming in to say, you know what? My tenants are not actually wanting this idea that we proposed. Um, you know, made of this day, maybe only lids like this. So, now, to accommodate that, but to, to actually address the need for a master plan, we want to go move to have, you know, whatever, over the bulbs. And everybody's going to do that instead of lids, and in addition to lids. But everyone's logos still have their place within the prescribed heights and widths that we have approved. I'm okay with that. But I'm not okay with this, you know, sort of laissez-faire, you know, idea, variety that doesn't really, you know, as other commissioners have said, that doesn't, it's not part of how we do master plan. So, I would vote down.
My vote, you have a class. We agree with that. So. Okay, so, it seems that we don't have enough votes for approval today. Um, I think that we can make a motion to deny any master plan to allow this additional, uh, variety. But I think that, uh, you know, there may be an opportunity for you to rethink your master plan as a master plan is in the future. But for now, I think just adding this additional layer to, um, the master plan is something we don't have support for. People, you have to be all in there. So, I am, I'm making that.
In matter of the miscellaneous amendments, uh, in Manhattan, obviously, nineteen twenty-seven, six twenty-seven, one five zero one driveway, permanent of the individual landmark. A French Baudrillard style-inspired landscape design that wrapped around in 1926 to 27. Application was done in specific rural business, nineteen twenty-one, five, six, six-two. For a master plan, government free feature installation of signage and storefront infill. I recommend denial. Oh, excuse me, I wanted to read the, um, the, uh, small first thing. Well, I want to note first that the subject of the progress, ninety-three, zero, one, one-four, was issued on the fifteenth, nineteen ninety-three. That's that issue master plan to replacement of several campus signage and storefronts. That was in the fourth implement. And some of the signage is not in compliance with requirements of master plan and was superseded by the mid-master plan. Therefore, in particular, the progress, nineteen two-one, top six-two, restorance infill signage, which evolved from larger illuminated signs with a non-blew echo signs with, uh, most advances. I recommend denial, uh, finding that the proposed, previously proposed illuminated signs with a maximum height of five feet were not to be keeping in historic traditional art and made signage, given the Times Square location of this individual landmark and the due to a variety of sign types, including able that illuminated metal light blurring, exposed LED bulbs, and exposed LED tubes, including a recalling vintage signs, give texture and articulation to the signage master plan made up for an increase in scale. And that the proposed active signs, uh, other flat lenses did not provide, plastic lenses did not provide provision under historic references with other approved signage types expressed and retracted in special architectural and character for characters individual landmark.
All in favor? Are you opposed?
I'm following the, uh, that is an application for, for Manhattan, uh, nineteen twenty-nine, this is fifty-sixty-nine street located with the Upper East Side historic district. This is a, you know, French Costco residential building signed by Henry C. Bolton, built in nineteen seventy-eight. The application is modified and removes stained glass windows and clear facade.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, which is our preservation staff. So, this is fifty-sixty-nine street located on the south side of East Street between Madison and Park Avenue in the Upper East Side district. The proposal is to modify and remove stained glass windows of the facade. Uh, it was originally presented to the commission on September twenty-fifth, but there was a report. Uh, the architects, Julie Oshman and Jared Brand, several architects, have agreed to present the proposal.
So, this is a public meeting night, so we have a motion to open up these meetings. Do you have a second? All in favor? Um, it is, I guess, do we have to find, it's all the architectural. Uh, and, and generally, we have modifications to the original design that we originally presented on September twenty-fifth. So, it's given somewhat essential background, uh, fifty-sixty-nine street between Madison. Here is the front facade of the building, the top, um, series of photographs, the fifty. Um, it's important to note that, um, the only portion of the rear of the building is this little bit that you get over Park Avenue. One of the modifications that we're discussing today are visible in a public way. Location plan, our tax booth, and now on to the rear facade. Uh, we're on the future side. Uh, the rear facade is a masonry, um, impression. It is distinguished by three copper bays. And within the copper bays, there is an existing sort of quilt work of stained glass. Um, I'm going to sort of break my presentation into four pieces. The existing conditions assessment, um, and then a quick review of proposal from September twenty-fifth. Um, and then we'll give alternate proposal, which makes modifications while we're previous to that. And lastly, um, we were asked to add a little bit of artificial off these copper bays, so I have to go ahead with that. The building has been used for commercial and institutional uses for about the last sixty years or so. So, there's a lot of mechanical equipment in general disrepair, especially of the rear facade. And now, on to our stained glass windows. We have seven areas of stained glass. As you can see here, one set on the second floor. A group in the bays on the third floor, here, here. Another masonry open here, and then three, uh, bays on the fourth floor. Um, in evaluating the conditions of the stained glass and the rear facade, we enlisted the help of VCA to assess, um, the conditions and also sort of artistic significance and, um, and, uh, performance of the stained glass. As a general note, um, the stained glass is not considered to be of high quality and the price reported from the trade catalog. I will read directly from the report. In the early twentieth century, stained glass windows were widely available at all levels of the time. Yale order catalogs offered woodenated and stained glass windows to avoid simple wrongs, while esteemed stained glass art studios such as Tiffany and Farn relied on stained glass art disease for the most extravagant mansions designed by master architects. We, this is VCA, are certain that neither Tiffany or LeFarn or any firm of the caliber was involved in supplying glass in this house. It is very likely the windows were ordered from trade catalog. So, at the second floor, we added this sort of key to describe the conditions. Um, the red, this red indicates, um, where the painting is severely bowed. Um, the blue indicates that there's stained glass over the turing. In this particular case, um, the stained glass is all here. I should note that the motif here is sort of Bavarian, um, motifs in, um, in the transom panels. Moving up to the third floor, the left bay. Um, here we have a lot of faded detail. In these red areas, we have a broken light and additional bowed, um, lighting. At the third floor masonry opening, uh, we have, these are actually in relatively good condition. There is some bowing and painting here. Again, at the third floor, the right bay, we have significant bowing often here. We have some painting that's been, um, um... Up on the fourth floor, the transom panels are missing at this line. We do have stained glass in the casement rooms below with faded, um, detail. At the center bay of the fourth floor, we have only transom panels and clear casements below. Uh, again, with faded detailing and transom. And the last room here, uh, the fourth floor, we have only transom panels, no casements. And, uh, again, we have faded detail. Um, so, in general, we have sort of summary page of, of the conditions. Where you can see on the left, the missing panels are the sort of pinkish color. The red indicates where the painting is damaged, um, and the shaded areas indicate faded from broken glass. Um, it was VCA's assessment that, given the conditions of deterioration and deformation found on the windows, if the windows were to be retained, we recommend that all of the stained glass be removed for the sash and reletting. So, essentially, the, the letting is in such poor condition that it would be very difficult to retain it, and basically, it would have to be rebuilt. Um, and I think this shows this in a less diplomatic way. So, uh, I guess, in conclusion on the conditions, we have severely deteriorated, uh, windows that are not keeping off the weather and probably aren't doing so for some time, which is why they continue to deteriorate. Um, there's a quilt work of stained glass and clear panels, and, uh, also a little bit of a, um, array of themes. There's no consistency in the stained glass. It was not the result of a singular artistic vision for this house. Um, it was still probably together from, from the catalog at that time. So, uh, I'll go through our proposals now for the two, the two, um, statements. Um, I just wanted to highlight a few things. In addition to the condition of the glass that we've already talked about, um, these are, uh, the building is being converted to master residential. These are available rooms, and there is construction for lights, and especially the view. Uh, some of these are right now, and it was, you know, usually exterior, uh, because the glass is fully colored. And, or you refuse that the visible meaning of the way, and then, in general readings, is the, uh, is the copper bays that give this building this sort of unique character. So, proposal A is what we call our consolidation scheme that we presented to these. And the idea with this was to take the glass that's there and based on sort of the colors and configuration sizes that exist, to come up with a way that you could be coherent and sort of red on the facade. So, um, we basically took, uh, the five bays of glass and consolidated it into three. The idea is that each room would have a center, at the center of the bay. Each room would have a clear panel, so that there's at least a bottom of clear view, um, to the rear. And that the configuration that we were retaining keeps the transoms across the top and the side of the panels. So, what we did is we took the two bays that had the pink glass, which is this bay and this bay, and consolidated them into this bay. So, this is now the pink glass bay. We took this, uh, the bare glass, which was the very dark yellow. Purple is the last one. Going over, the whole light is not what you're calling. That's right. Sorry if that wasn't clear. So, this is the proposal that we saw two weeks ago. And at that time, Commissioner's president asked that he has to explore saving and retaining more stained glass on the rear facade. And so, the rise of proposals is going to be presented. It's coming terribly. I told you that was a good one. So, the, the dark yellow glass that is here is moved up to this bay here. And we're proposing in this case because the dark glass is so dark that it could be replaced with clear glass, um, to allow some light into this room. And a similar approach over here, this second floor, oh, sorry, third floor bay that is larger than the tack moves up to the fourth floor, um, where it remains the same configuration of, that is three bays at all. So, uh, the only other thing to note here, I think, is that at the second floor, we, uh, the stained glass was in a base reopening. It also, uh, I should say, our client is not comfortable with the painting. It's sort of Bavarian style, uh, is not, uh, appropriate for them. And we're proposing to remove that and store that site. So, this is sort of summary page of, of what I just described, and a little bit of a picture. Um, we have just a few, with this formerly, formerly yellow glass now here and linking at the top bay, the pink glass here, and the glass that was here now to a, uh, condition. So, now on to the next proposal. And as I recall, in addition to the commissioner wanting to see more stained glass, the other concerns were about relocating and all cutting of these, uh, rights. So, sorry, just, I'll tell you some things. Um, so, yes, the concerns expressed were about trying to retain more glass, but particularly trying to retain more glass in its current location. So, uh, in this scheme, we have taken a similar approach to the second floor, and a similar approach to the center of the bays, where at each bay, we are proposing to remove, or each bay where it remains, we're proposing to remove and store the lights that's there to allow for a full new out, as you see on the proposed, right? And then, in terms of the remaining glass, which you see that's left here, we would leave it all at its existing location, but proposing that it become clear glass rather than, um, colored stained glass. So, we felt that, in our initial scheme, we were attempting to consolidate, present to the coherent facade, and... to the coherent facade and in this case, we feel like with the patchwork that remains, that it provides some comparance to sort of eliminate all of the heavy colors and styles that it's been... So, this is, so stained glass is here, again, in that same kind of... Here, here, across the transom. So, it's essentially where it is today, except at the center base.
Is it the reason that it's got a little less color, right, because you have outer light in the glass and then the same color is now white?
Sorry, we're proposing that the colored glass be replaced with clear glass, so that it's only leaded, it's leaded glass, leaded clear glass.
Oh, sure. So, those are actually new pieces of leaded glass. Those aren't?
Yeah, that's right. Here. So, this is a close-up of each of the bays. This is the third bay.
So, what's being disturbed? Maybe I was, I missed it there, but what actual old glass is going to stay? Is there any old glass that's going to stay or is all going to change?
I don't know if there's any clear, anything that would be clear now.
Old to store or old to stay? So, none of the old glass would be...
Be restored.
...be formed new leaded glass that's inspired by the old glass?
With the same leaded painting detail.
Well, new leaded painting would be still in the same pattern?
Yes.
Okay, nice. So, in scheme B, in scheme B, there's no new, there's no old glass being used at all. It's all moved.
In scheme A, it's one...
That's right. In scheme B, we were trying to keep the colors and trying to rearrange in a way that makes sense on the facade. In scheme B, we're trying to keep it more in place, but not as such a patchwork, you know, this is the approach we've taken. So, again, the fourth floor, this is, this is pretty subtle, I think. Yellow glass here and here, across the transoms, and... This is the last slide that you asked to add just to really do what is happening at the very top of the building. This is, we, these windows are not seen from, and quite you can see them very bleakly in case reopening. These are not original lights. It's a single basement that is divided lights. They're relatively new, we believe, and we're proposing that we treat them with similar lights to how we treat these proposals.
I just want to go for the record that you did receive a letter from friends of the Albert Simon Store District's office for the proposal. And they asked, and asked about the potential for the stained glass to be restored and necessary for the connection from the basement. That's something that's about enforcing a plan to store the glass on the site and also to have the addition of the stairs. Divided light basement windows would be more appropriate, more appropriate places for both the clear central windows of the bay and through the single open window opening from the third floor. All right, so I guess that is not responsible. So, at the hearing, we do not have a form, we have five free choice president, and those who are looking at the proposal to remove stained glass, relocate and modify some stained glass, ask that more stained glass be retained. The revised proposal proposes all of the stained glass. And then, what includes, remove leaded glass in more locations than was previously proposed. So, I just wonder, do you consider a combination of maybe some of the pieces that you were keeping in scheme A and then just give some clear glass on some of the others?
On your clear leaded glass? Well, I think, the honest answer is that the scheme that we're presenting here was something that was suggested at the staff level, which we thought seemed like an appropriate... I'm sorry if I'm asking to say that. Just being honest. But in an attempt to say to keep more of it in its existing location and not, not have it like this, don't worry about watching these in the room, that that was the approach I think that's... The, I think, even in both schemes, this, the red glass, the red glass we were proposing to make, because it's, it is so dark, you just, you get nothing in terms of light. And we thought that this would be a reasonable compromise.
Can I ask you one scheme you prefer right now?
Oh. Personally, I think our client prefers the first scheme. And I think we're very happy with either one.
But then, do you want to...
I just want to clarify, I think you may have been misunderstanding what the staff was, and it was like some of the past, the glass is frosted glass and the idea is swapping out the frosted glass from there might be something you may need to investigate, but I don't think staff intention ever was to bring up this thing.
I think the staff was thinking about a proposal that's similar to what we previously threw in the first part, which is swapping out some of the glass from clear glass that we're taking.
So, we may have misunderstood that. We had also found a precedent, so we know the progress several blocks away in the facade of the townhouse where leaded glass, clear leaded glass was allowed to replace stained glass that had been removed in the night. So, when we, I think we put that together with recommendation and that's how we look at this. So, that's, anyway, that's how we look at it.
Any other questions? Well, I think, you know, we've had, we had another application earlier of stained glass and the lost stained glass. We have property where we had previously approved a compromised solution, replacing some of the glass and clear glass and he being, replacing the frosted glass with clear glass and he being the same portions. This is at the rear facade and there are, some of the windows are deteriorated and are missing. The proposals, I think, to kind of retain it within the bays seems too illogical, they sort of seem to have features, but I do think this goes well beyond what we approved for the bays. So, I think, in the end, there's not enough fabric to contain those bays. Over the lower portion of the strategy that retains stained glass or something like the bays.
Is that scheme A?
That's scheme A.
I mean, for me, scheme A's fine. Actually, that's the concern of having to do with relocating or resizing pains as relatively moved to get their painting, this trash, definitely building the glasses, anything. So, if you make it a little smaller, a little bigger, that's okay. How about you say vote for scheme A and follow that?
Yeah, and to add to your point, we, we have a forum, so while commissioners, you can take the comments that you reference, we really should give a fair betting with the full group here to proposal A, even though I dispute proposal A, it should still get a fair betting, you know, once it's settled.
I just, I want to say that I like scheme A. I think, I can recall is that this is completely not visible from any public way. To me, they've gone to an extraordinary extent to accommodate having the stained glass in anyway. I think it's been pretty well established that the stained glass is not particularly significant for a long, so, for a homeowner on the building behind stained glass. This homeowner doesn't, I don't think it's that significant. The bays, the bays themselves are very significant, nothing's been suggested to change that. So, the glass has been rearranged a bit, not totally eliminated, rearranged in order to have some windows that you can see out of it. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. And I was in favor then and I'm in favor now of the original scheme, A, on whatever is called. To me, it's fine. Now, now, other people don't think it's fine, I suppose, and we'll see what we say.
Yeah, that'd be more to say than I said the first time around. I was here and I thought that we needed to preserve the order, so I'll just go there.
I'm completely, sorry, I wasn't prepared. But I think scheme A is absolutely fine. Very, I mean, one thing that I think this architect has worked very well is even in modernizing and modifying, it's very respectful to the, to the integrity of the architecture and the design. And I appreciate that behind the scenes.
I wasn't here two years ago, I was on tour, but putting in the two, those on site, some of the strong partners.
I made one suggestion, the scheme A modification, that I think should be renewed. If it is in scheme A, if you forgot scheme A, that center window was eliminated, I would suggest that we might as well just stay on it. I think that should be... Right, right with transom, correct?
Just the transom.
I can work with staff with transom.
So, I think we have enough for the proposal as originally proposed the modification that that, that the paint, at least in the transom, that the whole...
Let's, let's face it, just stepping back, there's no view. It's a, it's a, it's a near shot. The reason I think that led the glass in the first place was to mask the fact that we're staring at the bedroom to be aware, but today's today.
I just want to say that's okay. I mean, whichever way we go on this is fine, but actually, the light will be different in the window because what it does is it unifies the top of the middle as opposed to having like really different, you know, bands of windows. So, I would keep the modern way though because of that. That's just my opinion. If everyone wants to do it another way, that's fine. So, I think that we're very close to agreeing, I mean, approval of scheme A with giving some portion of that middle window. The staff just wants to clarify one thing about the scheme proposed on scheme A and... Scheme A just retains, re-locates, locates and keeps the stained glass panel.
In the matter of fifteen, E60 minus three, Upper West, Upper East Side, District. In neon first classer, residential building, owned by George Felton, in nineteen seventy thirty, application is to modify and remove stained glass windows and clear the sun. I note that the building's scale, style, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special, I told, historic character of the Upper East Side District. I recommend approval of the nominations, that the proposal will not be visible from any thorough care. And several of the stained, leaded glass windows have already been replaced and some of the painting is still being moved and damaged in the same conditions. That the living of a limited percentage of historical windows by the multi-story composition entering stain and leaded glass windows, a variety of copper bays, will not significantly diminish the overall character of the design. That all the historic windows, which are not supposed to be reinstalled at this time, will be restored and retained on site, with a wide circular location to allow for possible reinstallation in the future. That the existing arch, multi-top four windows that were at the facade are modern and the historic configuration of those windows is unknown, and that the selected relocation and modification of those will not diminish overall composition. And that the proposed arch, single light metal basement windows that are stored will not contract from the unified composition and will only be illegally visible and probably thoroughly abused where there are imperfections and not be perceptible.
Yeah, with the modification.
And that the removal of the case of window from the punch open, punch window opening at the center of the third door will diminish the sound and attack the sound. And that the historic case of windows that the punch opening at the center of the third door will be retained without time to be modified.
As a transom?
Okay, as a transom. Did he hear? Can you oppose? One.
Okay, one more. It's an application for the appropriate, that's the word, Madison Avenue, nineteen two, three, six, nine, so seven, three miles from that, where the Upper East Side District, it's an apartment building designed by Anthony Graham Pode and built in nineteen fifty-nine. The application is to legalize work of the corner storefront, not to purchase, shift to get appropriate financing, and five, three, three, zero, and say it's in England, and to us, one, seven, six, five, three.
Good afternoon, Commissioner James, from Seattle Preservation Staff. Seven five three Madison Avenue is located at the northeast corner of Madison and E60 Fifth Street. The application is to legalize one thousand nine clients with certain government programs nineteen one five three three zero and November nineteen one seven six five three. This is the previously approved design. This was presented in a public meeting on July twenty-fourth, and the application at that time... And the application at that time was to address and legalize violations, including, I'll just point these out, a through wall blooper at the northernmost limestone plaid here, recessed double door at the corner facing Madison Avenue, and a corner window adjacent here, a Madison Avenue through wall vent, irregular alignment of the piers to accommodate the side east connectors, and irregular climbing interface of the new limestone plating for the retail on sixty fifth street and the old plating of the residential entries. This is a photo at the time. Subsequently, as presented now, Christine Rockwell, LBR Architects, and property manager and owner representative of Hope Sutton, are here to answer questions about the new proposal and their revised design, which has powder coated the through wall blooper at this Madison Avenue facade, has re-studied and redesigned the doors, have a recessed door at Madison Avenue facade, and to lengthen the corner pier, relocate the side east connector to get rid of the corner window, and to retain the through window over at E sixty fifth street facade. Previous comments by Commissioner Alfred Smith about the two through wall blooper's above have been noted that these were part of the original design and that these align with the above units and for the rest of the building.
Okay, so just asking the general opinion of proceedings here, this was a proposal to legalize storefront changes, which included a kind of a corner entry that had a jog in the main street piers and blooper scattered throughout. And Commissioners, the time asked for the proportions and regularly, proportions to be re-studied and to be made more regular and particularly to have a corner pier. And the applicants have proposed that the opening is a regularized and all of the attachments are also regularized.
This is still at the proposal stage, this hasn't been done.
Right. So is everybody okay with that? If they do, it's back to what we asked.
For the garden. You should separate to your Madison Avenue, number six, or just for your picture. Is to legalize work at the large storefront in non-store class in C I A, nineteen seventy, very ambitious, and then nineteen seventy six, eight, three. I note the board is not more than forty different stores. It has more than ever, people finding the proposed works previously, they are, it's living, there's a lot of, a lot of store presence. Is in keeping with the evolving character of Madison Avenue and elsewhere within the upper sides of the district. The dark finish through window louver at E sixty fifth street is at the side street, side street, side, here's the typical transit replacement. Whether relocated, these doors relocated, side east connections will reestablish, get rid of the same modules that we call above as Madison Street's gate. That the presence of a proficient behind glass at a portion of one show window screens that exist in staircases leading to the basement and creation of refrigerating space and maintaining the sense of experience of storefront. And the finishing northernmost through wall blooper at Madison Avenue, that according to the plating allows the age base consideration. Nothing more discreet for presence.
Second.
Call the paper?
Hi.
Any opposed? That's approved and the hearing is done for today. Thank you.